Okay, so we're gonna open the Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen meeting at about six oh one. Can we please stand to pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
Senator Paul O'Connell, Senator Paul O'Connell, Senator Sanders, Senator Sanders.
Okay, so I don't see anyone for public comment. And we have an appointment of Thomas Costa, nine clock, Road Grove, to position of water and sewer, operator and technician, effective November fourth, two thousand and nineteen. The appointment is for forty hours a week with the starting rate for a TDI DD1 operator in training. The appointment will be contingent upon an approved core re-screening. Is Thomas here? Do you wanna come up? Just go to the podium. Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Look forward to having you onboard. I don't know if any of the members wanna say anything, or anyone have anything you wanna say?
Just to fill an existing vacancy.
So Colin, the superintendent here, you might wanna answer those questions.
Colin, come on up.
Yeah, when I got the superintendent's position, that left an opening that we've been trying to fill since July. This is Tom. We're hoping that you guys give him the blessing. He's our new operator in the field.
This is a vacant position you've had for a while.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and you're moving over from Western Overe?
Correct.
Well, we'll train you right.
Kathy, you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Thomas Costa, nine o'clock, Road Grove, water and sewer operator, effective November fourth, two thousand and nineteen, with the appointment for forty hours per week with the starting rate for D, T1 slash D1 operator in training. And this appointment will be contingent upon an approved core re-screening.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is the interviews for the position of fire chief. We had Gregory, was it Quarkell? I know, I was just gonna, no? Okay, so we have Robert Valentine, deputy fire chief from Albion Fire Department in Albion, Rhode Island. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll open it up to the board. Anyone has any questions? Go ahead, Mike.
Hi, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
I read through your resume and the background information provided here. I didn't see a lot of experience doing any budgets and, what do you mean by that?
Yes, sir. I'm the deputy chief of the department, and since being promoted to that position, I work directly hand in hand with the chief of the department, preparing the annual budget for the annual meeting. I'm in charge of the training division, so I have to come up with the entire training line item for that budget portion of it, and then him and I work hand in hand, preparing the budget.
So you're in charge of the training division and the budget, and that's part of the overall budget that you would work with the chief on?
Correct. I work on the training part of that line item, and I set everything up, and I bring him what I need for that portion of the budget, and then him and I sit down and figure out what's needed for the rest of the budget.
Okay, so you get that input and knowledge into the total budget, but more specifically that in that knowledge of the training.
That's correct.
Okay, and what about grant writing?
I've written several successful state grants, and two successful FEMA grants for the assistance to firefighters grants.
Is that for training or that equipment?
The first, the first FEMA grant that I wrote was for self-contained breathing apparatus. We replaced seventeen of our old ones with thirty-four new bottles, a rapid intervention bottle and pack, a pack tracker, which is a device to find the firefighter if he goes down by his air pack. And then the second grant through FEMA that I was awarded, that I wrote, was for a personal protective equipment, gear, washer, extractor, and dryer.
Okay, and one other question, more of a, I'm really looking for someone who can come in, have a big presence, really take control of the fire department, take the leadership of it, not only from a personnel perspective, but at the budget, staying on course with the budget, coming and talking before about what they need, what the fire department's doing, not only in front of me, but a year from now, three to five years from now. Do you have experience with that kind of leadership?
Yes, sir. I report directly to the chief of the department, but I'm in charge of the day-to-day operations, incidents. I'm in charge of all the personnel issues. If it gets to the point where it has to go to the chief, then we bring it to the chief. I also report to a board of commissioners. The chief and I are required to be at the monthly meetings with the board of commissioners. He has his report that he does, and I have a full training report that I have to bring to them. My working relationship with them is fantastic, because the chief and I work hand in hand with the board all the time. It's more of a team effort. The board is in charge of the finances, we're in charge of the day-to-day operations, but we all work together.
But in this role, you would be an individual, decision-making, until it came to this one. Are you comfortable being in that role, especially like the disciplinary type action?
Yes, sir. I've had to take disciplinary actions in the past.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Go ahead, Bill.
All right. You, you're certified in New Hampshire, you're an EMT in New Han, I'm sorry, in Rhode Island?
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that reciprocal with Mass., you know?
I believe it is. I've checked into the process through reciprocity.
Yep.
I would give up my Rhode Island license and take on a Massachusetts license.
Really?
Yes.
That's different. You mentioned the grants, that's always important, that's always important. You, you, were you, were you the deputy, forty-one hundred permanent residents?
Yes, sir. And plus commercial area that brings in another ten thousand during Monday through Friday daytime.
Geez, we'd love something like that. What's the budget of fire department down here?
One point two million.
One point two million. How many full-time people?
We have six full-
Oh, I'm sorry, it's here.
Okay.
Let's see, what was this? According to your paperwork, you're a school driver instructor?
Yes, sir.
Really? Hey, you seem to, you've got a lot of, you've got a lot of training, and I think that's, obviously you, you're not certified as a fire chief in Massachusetts, but obviously you're not because you're in Rhode Island.
Correct.
And based upon what I've been able to read here, it shouldn't take you much to get there anyway.
No, sir, I'm, I've already taken officership one in Rhode Island. I'm a certified instructor.
They probably don't have that certification in Rhode Island, but it's something-
The Mass. chief, no, but I am more than willing to take it.
It's something that's only been in existence here maybe five, six years. I lose track of time, maybe it's a little longer than that. Maybe it's six or seven, but yeah, it, based upon your credentials here, I don't see where you would, would have any problem with that. You've certainly got the schooling and stuff. You probably, you've probably already even looked at the application process.
I have, sir. I've already checked into the process.
I don't have any other questions now, but I don't deserve to come back.
Kathy, you ready, or?
Phil can go.
There you go.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for applying for the job, first of all, in the Valentine, Valentine?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it. You currently live in Cumberland, Rhode Island?
Yes.
Have you thought about the relocation cost, and what is it going to be? I mean, this is not easy, right? Relocating, uprooting.
My wife and I, when I found out I was getting interviewed, took a ride and checked the area out. We saw a little bit of land for sale, and her dream has always been to have a log cabin. She's rooting me on because she wants her new log cabin built in Groveland. So we do not have a problem. My daughter and my granddaughter live in Stoughton. We're about forty-five minutes to one hour away from them now. We're gonna be about the same distance if we move up. My wife's a hundred percent behind this. Again, she's already started looking at real estate.
Perfect. Now, you don't need to get your Mass. fire chief credentials within six months. Is that, is that reasonable? Is that due?
Absolutely.
And can you tell me a little bit about your experience now with the Albion? It's a call fire department?
Yes, sir.
Describe to me, you know, a typical day in the life of deputy fire chief, Robert Valentine.
I'm the number two person in charge of the department. I work a shift of twenty-four on, twenty-four off, twenty-four on, and then five off. I never get the five off. I'm in the station constantly. Since I was sixteen, I've been carrying a little radio on my hip when I started as a junior firefighter, so I'm used to being on call twenty-four seven. To this day, I carry a pager as part of my job. I'm assigned a car, so I'm available twenty-four seven. My typical day is, first thing in the morning, I come in, make sure that the trucks are checked, make sure that all the equipment is operable, make sure that all the personnel are in, and I assign them their duties for the day, what truck they're gonna be on, and what housework needs to be done. Then the chief comes in, about an hour after I get there, we sit down, discuss anything that's special that may need to be done, and then I go to my job. I do a lot of the tactics and strategic training. I do all the training. I assign training to the company officers. I've found that being in charge of the training division, if I do all the talking, it gets stale and bored. So I've found that assigning it to the different offices, it keeps everything fresh and new ideas. I'm in charge of all the part-time call firefighters. They report directly to me. The full-timers report to both me and the chief. They're in the union, so we have to keep an eye on the collective bargaining agreement. The chief and I do that together, but all the part-timers, my direct responsibility. I do all the scheduling for their shifts. I'm also in charge of the monthly reports to go out for NIFERS, the National Fire Incident Reporting System. I'm in charge of the reporting system. All our reports, medical and fire, have to go through me before they get sent out. If there's any issues, I kick them back to the officer and have them redo it. And then if there are any runs, I'm the incident commander, unless it's, goes beyond two alarms, then the chief shows up and I become the operations officer. He becomes the incident commander.
Now, is deputy fire chief in Albion, Rhode Island, you a full-time job?
Yes, sir.
Now, I don't know if you have the same problem in Albion, I mean, somewhat, because you do have a mix of full-time and call fire departments. We have, what I understand from some research, it's not an uncommon problem that volunteers, especially during the day, we're a hundred percent call fire department right now, and like most call fire departments in the country, we're exhibiting a lack of manpower, especially during the day. How do you see yourself being able to fill that gap, so you're not the only person here during the day, having to run to multiple scenes?
First, I'd have to sit down and do an operational assessment and see exactly who is available, and then a recruitment drive would be great. The unfortunate thing is with the recruitment drive in the paid-on-call system, the volunteer system, Monday through Friday, seven to five, is the most difficult time. We started, we now have six full-timers, and we do the rotating shift. We had started with two full-timers working Monday through Friday. Then we added the chief as the full-time position. Then from there, it progressed. We still have twenty-six part-timers, which helps the budget a great deal. In keeping with the budget, I would think that maybe you could possibly do a schedule Monday through Friday where you have some part-time hours to cover, but that's gonna affect the budget. It's always the most difficult part of it. You have, I have to sit down and prioritize also what the needs and what the wants are. The needs are gonna have to come first, and that would be something that you may have to look at. Going to a full-time chief and another full-timer is huge on the budget, so I would try to start with part-time hours to get somebody in working right along with me. Also, I know there is a mutual aid system with the surrounding communities. I would have to sit down with the surrounding chiefs and strengthen that mutual aid bond. If there's a couple of part-timers, as the chief initially aren't seen to with two in, two out, I may have to be part of the firefighting force and have the surrounding communities assist. At the same time, I'm more than willing to go to the surrounding communities and assist them.
Perfect. I think that's it for now.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your answers.
Thank you.
Hi, we met earlier. So I've kind of jotted down, you've answered so many questions. So I guess I just have just a couple of questions. I don't know if you're aware of it. Are you aware that we did have a study done?
Yes, I did some research on the Groveland town and the Groveland Fire Department. I did find a copy of that study, and I printed it, and I've read some of it and some of the recommendations.
That's good. So your eyes are wide open.
Yes, me and they are.
That's good to hear. Thank you. So I'm pleased to hear that. We've been going through a rather bumpy patch here, not having a permanent fire chief on staff, and not knowing which way to go to get things moving better. So my question is, what, knowing all this and having seen the report, I have to ask you, what is it about this job that makes you wanna leave Rhode Island and come up here? Is there any one or two things that interest you or make you feel like this is a good fit for you?
Oh, for starters, I like the challenge. I've started as a sixteen-year-old junior firefighter on a volunteer department. My heart is with the paid call volunteer departments. I stayed with combination departments. I tested all over the state of Rhode Island. I got the position in a combination department where, at first, it was, like I said, two full-timers and all twenty-eight to thirty volunteers. Unlike the volunteer system, I felt, when I saw this advertised for the position, that I'd be a perfect fit because I'll fight to keep that call man. It keeps the budget down, and I find that you work more with the community, and as you get a partnership with the community and the firefighters, things tend to work out easier.
Okay.
So if you do need a small piece of equipment, they're more apt to say, yes, we'll give you that small piece of equipment, because you're not killing us with overtime and full-time personnel.
Right. Now, they asked you earlier, that you're not certified as a chief in Massachusetts, and I've seen the point system, and I'm just wondering, were you planning to get certified as a chief at some point, regardless? Because you've had a pretty long career.
Yes, ma'am. Again, I am certified in the state of Rhode Island as a chief officer. I've gone through the officerships classes there.
Okay.
I would be more than willing, and I was asked if six months was enough time. I believe it is. The Fire Chiefs Association of Massachusetts and the Massachusetts Fire Academy is actually leaps and bounds ahead of Rhode Island.
Okay, so you feel there's something you would have to still go back to school for? I was just thinking you might already have the credentials to-
I would have to check with the Massachusetts Academy.
Okay, okay.
And whatever classes I need to take, I'd jump right in and take.
Okay, and your EMT status, that would just transfer?
I would, I would look into the Department of Health if transferring that.
Okay. I guess, the only other question I had is, how do you feel about signing a contract with the Board of Selectmen, you know, with the town as part of your employment here?
I am, I currently, through the Board of Albion, have a contract. I would, I prefer being under contract.
Thank you. Let's just say we've had a history of someone that didn't wanna sign a contract.
No, I prefer a contract. That gives me a plan.
Right.
If it's one year, three year, five year, I have a plan that I can, knowing that I'm moving forward and I'm here for that amount of time.
Right, it clarifies the-
Absolutely. I think the relationship between the Board of Selectmen, the police chief, the fire chief, has to be a team effort, and we have to work together, make a public safety division.
Right, thank you. I mean, I don't have any other questions at this time.
Well, I'll let him go again, but I'm gonna ask a couple of questions. Most of them already been asked, but I usually tend to, sometimes ask the ones that they don't wanna ask. Gotcha. So I'll start out by asking, your personality. Now, some people have a personality, they can get along with anyone, and some people have a personality where they're very stringent. You can't, you can't push over me. Do you manage in a, in a degree where I'm the manager? Or do you manage in the degree where I'll get along with you guys? I look at it as, I compare it. My favorite sport is ice hockey. Ice hockey's fast-moving, you have to make decisions quick. Firefighting is fast-moving, you have to make decisions quick. I like to find, I like to call myself a coach. I wanna lead. I wanna coach, I wanna teach, and I'm making the final decision. When we have to sit down and make decisions, by all means, make suggestions, I'm gonna take the suggestions and recommendations, but I'm the one that's fully responsible for the final decision-making, and that would be my job. So walking into the job, if you got it, you would have, set yourself with a demeanor, I'm the boss, not being, not being to the point where you're like, I don't wanna hear it from you, but you're gonna be the manager, you're gonna be the head guy. That's, I personally, personally think, when you're running, I own my own business. Yep. That's how I manage. I buy my guys coffee, I buy them lunch, I'm friendly to a certain point, but at the end of the day, they respect me, and they respect me because I manage that, at the end of the day, I'm the boss, it's my decision, et cetera, et cetera. You know what I'm trying to say? Yes, sir. And that's where I just wanna make sure that I could get clear that we need that here. We need the head guy. Absolutely. This has been going on for two years. We need someone in command, the day in here, with that role. That's what, that's one of the main things that we do need. I feel very comfortable with that role. On that being said, you're in the military. Yes, sir. What were you, what were you in the military? Like, what were you doing? Like, what was your role? I was in the United States Air Force. Okay. And for four years, I was a special vehicle mechanic specializing in crash fire rescues. Okay. I was a mechanic on the fire trucks on the airline. Okay, so that being said, you have a lot of background with the equipment. Yes, sir. So if something's over there that you see and you come to us and say, hey, I think that we need this, and this is coming up, we have a set of eyes on that? Absolutely. Okay, so that being said, when it comes time to purchase equipment, I'm a landscaping, own my own company, and these guys aren't firemen and trucks. Do you have the ability to come to us and say, this truck, for whatever reason, not even going out to third party, I know this truck needs it, and you know when that truck is done and ready to go? Yes, sir. Okay, so you have the confidence in that? Yes, sir. And not only need a truck, it could be whatever, you know what I'm trying to say? You have the ability for purchasing and knowing when it's due and when, and when it needs to be rolled over? Yes, sir. Okay. Community relations. What do you, what do you plan on trying to do for community relations? Now, some towns have fire departments, they get very involved in the community, and some towns that don't. Personally, me, I think that the police, the fire, and highway, and everyone is involved in the community. It makes a better community. Do you have any thoughts on that? Yes, sir. The old adage was, fire prevention, fire education. I've done a little bit of research, and I found a better way of looking at it would be a community risk reduction plan, and that's the fire and police and first responders getting out there with the community, looking at finding things that are high-risk issues and taking care of them to prevent them. Right. And that's working hand in hand with the first responders and the community and the board. Okay. Have you had any experience, which you probably did, but I'm just asking question, I don't know you, in the police department where you work, have you dealt with the police department? Have you dealt with the police chief? Have you dealt with that end of it? Yes, sir. In Lincoln, Albion is a fire district in Lincoln. In the town of Lincoln, we have the police department. We do a, a national night out. The fire and police work hand in hand with this. I'm in charge of that part of it on the fire department. I also have company officers that assist me, but I'm the one that works hand in hand with the deputy chief of police in Lincoln. I'm a firm believer in a partnership with the police and fire. Because of today's world, we have to work together. You have motor vehicle accidents, it's a traffic incident, police are gonna be there, it's a medical incident, fire's gonna be there. We have to work hand in hand. We need to, one of my first things that I'd like to do if I was to become fire chief here is sit down with the police chief and form a public safety division that would make everybody else in Essex County jealous. Right. Fire prevention. Do you have much of a background in actual fire prevention? Yes, sir. I'm a certified fire inspector through National Fire Academy. Okay. I work hand in hand with our captain, who's a fire prevention officer. Before I was promoted to deputy chief, I was in charge of the fire prevention bureau in Albion. I've conducted thousands of inspections. I've done plan and review for new buildings. That's what I was gonna ask. So you're familiar with the building? All aspects of- And all that, okay. Yes. All right. I think one of the other, my fellow suckman asked about the men not showing during the day, and I think you've pretty much answered it. Our biggest problem is, is during the day, having the men on the ground, it's a call department, et cetera, et cetera. So that would be something that we need to address. Yes, sir. It's not always the situation, but it can be. The other issue that you may have with the paid-on call, Monday through Friday, the most difficult. The other issue is medical calls. It, you get burnt out. If you're doing seven hundred medical calls a year, and you're doing four hundred fire calls a year, you tend to try to slack away from that. Yep. We found that if we, that we developed teams, when we would, before we went around the clock with the part-timers and the full-timers, we had developed teams of three.
with the part timers and the full timers, we had developed teams of three. So any EMS calls that week, an officer and two firefighters answered EMS calls. And we rotated it by week. So if you had four teams, you only had to run out once a month. If there's a fire call, by all means, everybody has to show. So for the EMS side of it, we had developed teams and that held us over for several years because the personnel felt that, they didn't feel like 24/7, they had to be there for EMS calls, just fire calls.
The town you're in, do you run an ambulance?
The town runs rescue, we run with, the town runs the ambulance, we run with the ambulance. Similar to this, you have privatized ambulance.
Right, so that's what you have.
The town of Lincoln has the ambulance, where Albion runs with that ambulance.
So you're using that, you're using their ambulance?
Correct.
Okay. I think that was it. Obviously, you must handle situations good. I mean, you've got a situation where it could be crazy and, you know, obviously in the, being a deputy, you must be able to be calm, be cool and collective and deal with it.
Yes, sir.
I think that's good. I'll go second time around. I think Mike wanted to go, he asked me.
Yes. There's more of an observation. You had mentioned that in order to be certified in math, you'd have to get some R and D class.
Yes, sir.
It also says on your resume that you currently enrolled in Community College of Rhode Island?
Finishing my associate's degree, yes, sir.
Are both of those going to overlap and be a real burden?
No, sir. I'm just about done the associate's degree.
Okay. And kind of a stand and canned question, but I think I know the answer. Why do you want to leave the current?
As I said at the beginning, when I was 16, this March, I'll be 56, so that makes 40 years in the town of Lincoln, 28 as of October 8th, full-time. We're currently looking at consolidation. I'm the number two person. My chief is looking to retire in three to four years. The chief of the neighboring department that we're going to consolidate with is the same age as me, and he's been guaranteed the chief's position when my chief retires. So my chance of becoming chief there is pretty much done. I saw this ad and I thought this would be a perfect fit where I can retire from my current job and move up here. My wife has always loved this portion of Massachusetts, the southern portion of New Hampshire. I saw this as, and again, like I said to you, it's an on-call. I started as an on-call firefighter, to this day, I carry a pager on my hip. When the tones go out, I respond. It's the way I was raised.
Right. I mean, it's a natural progression for a deputy chief to want to be a chief somewhere, right?
Yes, I want to be the chief.
What I was expecting, but I just, I wanted to ask.
Deputy, could you, could you just touch on how your dispatch is set up? Do you have your own dispatch or do you have a public safety dispatch?
We have a public safety dispatch that's run out of the police department. The police supervise it, run it. The fire chief and the police chief work together on the policies on how to dispatch and it's run out of the police station.
Okay, and I assume based upon your, your list of apparatus that you have, you run one station in Albion?
Yes, sir.
Just, can you just touch on, how do you integrate your full-time and your call man? Generally, a department that's running with call men and full-time guys is always a conflict. Where the full-time guys, when they're in the union, they kind of, they don't, they don't accept the call guys. How do you, how do you handle that in Albion?
We've never had an issue due to the fact that all of our full timers started as call men on that department. We did what was called an internal promotion. So we tested internally and those that finished, we promoted to full-time status. That kept us within the label laws because they were internal promotions from part-time status to full-time status. So they've always worked together. And as far as working together, we have the six, four of us rotate shifts. There's one Monday through Friday, and then the chief works Monday through Friday. I'm on duty, I'm working with all part timers. The captain's working, he's working with all part timers. They each have a shift that they work.
So you don't, you don't staff a truck, you don't staff a truck 24 hours a day?
Yes, sir, we do. Yes, I'm on, I'm on 24/7. I'm in the incident command car when the chief is not around. When the chief is around, I ride the truck with the part timers. The captain rides the truck with the part timers, 24-hour shift. And the other, the two lieutenants. The sixth gentleman is a firefighter, he works Monday through Friday. So we have an extra full timer Monday through Friday.
Okay, so basically, you've got, your officer is a full-time and then supplemented by your call guys?
Yes, sir. And they work side by side.
Like during the day? Like if you're on and you've got a, you've got another full-time guy, Monday through Friday, would the two of you jump on the truck and go?
He would jump on a truck with the two part timers, I would take the car and run incident command.
And you're able to, you're able to get the call guys to be around?
Yes, sir. If we have a working fire, we have an automatic aid and a mutual aid system, plus the other two trucks that are not staffed, the off-duty personnel come in and they get paid on call like Groveland.
Okay. Sounds good. And forget the log cabin. I'll put you in touch with people and we'll tell you no.
Okay.
I'm also.
Anything anymore?
I guess the one question I have for you, I mean, I think you've got the things we're looking for. And it sounds like you are interested in relocating to this place. And you seem to understand that it's going to be a challenge.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So can you, I'm going to put you on the spot just a little bit, if you don't mind. Can you maybe perhaps present to us a difficult situation that you've dealt with at the work in the past and what it was and how you resolved it?
A little over a dozen years ago, I was still a captain. We had a chief that, we did a reevaluation. And instead of dropping the tax rate, he kept it the same. And when the taxpayers saw their bill, because of the reevaluation, the evaluations went way up, leaving the tax rate the same caused their tax bill to go way up. And there was a large revolt and that chief lost his job. I was the captain at the time and then deputy chief, myself and the deputy chief had to step up. He was the acting chief, I was the acting deputy chief for almost a year. And we had to bring morale back. Morale was devastated because the taxpayers didn't, we had to get out in the community and redevelop our relationship because they didn't trust us anymore. And we had to get their trust back.
And what did you do to, to recover that trust in the community? And just impart, you don't have to go blow by blow.
Right, we went out into the community, we talked to them. We had some days at open houses in the station where they came in, we discussed their issues with the former chief and how we could repair it. And we started a relationship to where we regained each other's trust.
Right, thank you. That's all.
Yeah, really quick, I'd like to comment about the relationship with the police department. I think in a small town like ours, it's vital to have that strong relationship with the police. You're going to be working side by side a lot.
Yes, sir. I've met the chief of police, he seems like a.
He's a good guy.
Good guy and I think I could really.
We like him.
Yes. I, I feel like I fit in with the leadership team as far as the public safety division. I could work with him very easily from what I've met him in the interviews prior to this.
Awesome. And just one comment and then I'm done. Are you familiar with the strong chief, weak chief kind of legislature in the state?
Yes, I am. A strong chief is in control of the budget and does the expenditures and the purchasing with approval of the Board of Selectmen on major issues.
Okay, so I just want to make sure you're familiar with that and you know what you were getting into. We are, and you are aware that we are a strong chief.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Everyone else good?
Yep.
Okay, I'm just going to ask a couple more quick ones and we'll be done. What percentage in Albion is fire calls versus EMS? Are you high on EMS and?
I'm going to say if you take away, if you put motor vehicle accidents and extrication on the fire call side, it's 60/40.
Okay. All right.
60 medical?
Yes, sir, 60 medical. Medical is taking over the fire service.
And you said you're willing to relocate, you're excited to relocate?
Yes, sir.
If we were to give you the job, when do you see that happening?
First thing I would do is call my realtor and put my house on the market and stop looking for property and/or property or house up here.
So in your, in your community, I know here, right now, things sell pretty quick. I don't know what happens out there, but if.
Right now, Rhode Island, it's a seller's market.
Okay.
So it's been, stuff that's been going on the market's been going fairly easily.
So you try to accommodate whatever we needed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, as far as full retirement, I'm talking when you go to retire, do we have an age for retirement? Was it?
65.
65, so you'd plan staying until the?
10 years.
10, you plan for the 10 years?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's kind of important to me, anyway.
I don't think you could get anything done in less than that, really.
Well, that's what, that's my point. You need to get in, get acclimated and get going.
Correct.
I think that's it. And I thank you for coming in and, oh, sorry, Mike, I'm sorry.
I didn't know we were ending it.
Oh, I asked.
If you were offered the job and we went through contracts and everything works out, what would be the short-term plan to get up here? You'd have to sell your house, you'd have to move and do all that stuff, find land, maybe build a house, buy a house. That's going to take time. What would be the short-term?
Short plan would be, I would try to get up here and rent a place right away. So I could stay up here during a week.
Right.
My wife, if we sell the house and we're renting, she would come up here. The problem with the renting is we have a black lab dog that a lot of homeowners don't want in their rental apartment. So she may stay with my daughter in Stoughton for a little bit while I rent up here until we get a house up here.
Okay.
I would make arrangements to get here as soon as possible. I understand that I need to get here and get to work.
Yeah, I mean, moving is not fun.
No, sir.
Whether you're moving across the country or down the street, it's not fun.
No, sir. Matter of fact, I told her this time, it's going to be a little more expensive because I'm not lifting a thing, the movie's rolling.
Yeah, I don't blame you because I don't like to be here.
So I think we're good, everyone else good here?
Yep.
I'm also.
I would like to ask Denise, is the crew that interviewed here tonight? No, I'm not, I know. I would like to just say thank you, whoever you are. Thank you for your hard work.
I think you'll ask them to speak after the interviews are over.
No, but I'm just saying, I got it, yeah. Okay, all right. Sorry, I guess I can't do it yet. Well, I was trying to, but that's all right. Thank you very much.
All right. On a closing note, I'd just like to thank you all for this opportunity.
Yep.
I feel that I would be a really perfect fit for this town and to work hand in hand with the police chief and create a public safety division. You'll be very proud of it. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Before you go.
Yes, sir.
There's always one more thing. Do you have any questions for us?
No, sir, I don't. I just, the closing statement and I've done my research on Groveland and I'm very satisfied with what I've read.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you. Okay. No, 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 no. Oh, okay. Well, I thought you said no. Anyway, we had another candidate that had, went through this afternoon, so we will not be interviewing that candidate. All right. So now, moving forward, we have the feedback from the fire chief screening members.
So the whole screening committee is here. If you would like to speak to them, I want to make sure I pronounce names right, so I have to just read them. No. So we have Chief Fisher from Merrimack, we have Chief Mitchell from Georgetown, and executive director Ronald Giovinacci from the Essex County Fire Chiefs Association, retired chief from Topsfield, and our police chief Jeff Gillen is our screening committee.
Well, I will say it again, I was trying to say it in front of the candidate, but thank you, everybody, for all your hard work. I know you put endless hours into this. I want the town people to hear it. And from me and I'm sure the board, thank you for all your hard work. Okay, okay. Now, if anyone wants to ask any questions?
I'd like to have a statement from them. They got any comments?
Sure, if anyone wants to come up to the podium, if they have any statements?
I'd like to ask one question. You have a great.
Go ahead.
I know you put a lot of hard work into this. How did you basically arrive at this candidate or these two candidates that are all you chose? And in your minds, believed that this was the right choice for Groveland at the time? And what's going through your, you know, your process?
Well, if you, if you look at, no different Georgetown, Groveland, we're small communities. We're very community orientated, where it's small, as the candidate said, we have to work hand in hand with public safety and work with the police department. So from a candidate and having a little bit of background with the fire districts, he comes from a small fire district within a large community. So it's kind of like a small community within the community. It's a small village, fire district. So it kind of fits the build of, you know, that small-town feel, which I think is more adaptable. The candidate comes from a call system, started on a call system, came up through the ranks, you know, watched a fire district evolve over time and saw the challenges that, you know, small fire districts, no different than a small town, faces financially and also struggles, as, you know, we all agree, the fire service, you know, the volunteerism and the call, call system is dying a slow death because people don't have the time. So I think from a standpoint is, he understands the struggles and thinking outside the box to try to make it work.
Great. That's my only question. And I just want to reiterate Chairman Dunn's feelings. I want to thank you personally for the help you extended to us and helping us bring these candidates to us. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? I will ask all three of you, and please be candid if you can, you've all come from the service, you've come where you are today. Is there any one of you that would say that you wouldn't be comfortable or you don't think this gentleman could get to where we need to get?
So, in the interview process, that was probably the biggest challenge because you had candidates that were lieutenants to a deputy chief. And he has the most management skill of the candidates that we had. And he is, we'll say, seasoned. He's dealt with a lot of growth issues within his own community. And I, being from the district, and I'm very well aware of, everybody is, of the challenges that are in Groveland. And, you know, you need somebody who has a variety of backgrounds in dealing with those kind of challenges. So I think, you know, this gentleman is, you know, obviously, he's what's left from the selection process, but he, he seems genuine in his desire to be here and he conveyed that to us as well.
Thank you. Well, again, thank you very much for your time. Chief Gillen, thank you for your time. On behalf of the board, and I'm sure they all feel the same way. All right, so moving on, we need to vote for an appointment for a fire chief if the board really.
Prior to that, Bill, you've got a board discussion on the candidate.
What is it?
We're supposed to have a board discussion.
Okay, because I, all right, feedback. All right. Board discussion on the candidate. Anyone want to start?
I mean, I kind of just took notes as you all started asking questions. He has budget experience, he has grant writing experience, both at state and FEMA grants. He's been in charge of day-to-day operations and incidents. Seems to be able to maintain a good working relationship with the supervisory, he called them a board of commissioners. a good working relationship with the supervisory, he called them a board of commissioners, I assume that's similar to us, maybe. I like that he talked about strengthening the mutual aid relationships, because that was mentioned in our consultant report. I like the fact that he realizes that this job will be a challenge, it's not gonna be a walk in the park, that there's going to be challenges as he walks in the door. I really like the fact that he looks forward to signing a contract, because we'll need that, so that we both, we're all on the same page and know what to expect. He's also well experienced in inspections, which we need, we need that site inspection work to come back to the fire chief. Many of these tasks have been parceled out within the fire department, and we need to bring him back in, so he, he's, he may need to become familiar with our building codes, as I understand from your comments. And would he have to become certified or something in Massachusetts to do inspections? Would that take long? You guys know that, or not, fire chiefs? So, he would be... So, he'd be certified by his appointment to do inspections? Okay, thank you for that. I also like the fact that he recognized the burnout that might, might actually explain some of the lack of response on daytime calls, that we have too many people showing up to every single call, and maybe that's a problem, that people are going to so many calls that they get burned out and then can't make it to the next one, so he recognizes that, I like that. He already said he would relocate here. He spoke repeatedly about having a positive working relationship with our public safety department, with our police chief, and I'm sure he meant also our building inspector as well. Asked him about a difficult situation and how he dealt with it, not knowing what to expect, and I was actually, I thought that his story was right on target for, for where we're coming from, as far as a fire chief resigns, and, and then you're left in this quandary of trying to get back up, everything up and running again, and rebuilding the trust between, within the department and between the community and department. So, those were the notes that I, that I took while he was talking to myself, and two, I thought it was fairly, fairly good responses.
Go ahead, Ed.
I'd like to ask the, the three chiefs, and, and, two chiefs and one ex-chief, if they see any negatives in this particular candidate?
Can I ask a point of order on this, just interfering in your question, but we were doing, I thought, the board discussion, and if we're gonna ping-pong back and forth, asking the board, the fire chiefs, and then asking the board, I don't feel like it's a board discussion. I'm sorry, that's just how I feel. I thought we...
Well, I, I, I agree a hundred percent, but you asked the, you asked them a question, and I felt that out of courtesy that I could do the same thing.
Just for clarification, just for clarification, to make sure he could do inspections, because I was reading through what I written down. I, I apologize, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just, I thought we were trying to have a board discussion of the candidate, and then if you wanna go back to...
Can you hold your thought, and I'll go back, would I, please?
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, do you have anything on the discussion?
Uh, no, no, he just, it seems like he meets all the qualifications here.
Okay, Bill?
I think, based on what I heard today, he seems like a very strong candidate. I'm also relying heavily on the experts that we relied heavily upon to bring this candidate to us, so, yeah, I, I think I'd like to move this candidate forward in the process.
Mike?
Yeah, I agree with Kathy, I agree with Bill. I think he has a lot of experience, I agree with what the board came up with, they put a lot of time into this, so obviously, they know more about fire safety and fire programs than I do, right? The one concern I have is, what I was looking for was that command of presence, right? Knowing that I am here, I am in charge, I am in the authority. Maybe it's because he's in an interview, I can get that, too. You know, I've been through plenty of interviews, so you come off a little bit different than you would on the job, but that command of presence is what I was looking for and trying to get out of him. Outside of that, I thought everything was great, but I really was looking for, this is my role, this is my house, this is my priorities, this is what we're doing, I'm in control. And I got a little bit of that, but I, I really wanted to see a really strong presence, and I think that was a little bit lacking, but everything else I thought was, was spot-on that the other people had mentioned.
To your point, I agree with you when I was trying to get that, but when he talked, he talked, "Sir," he talked like that military...
Yes.
That I got out of him.
I got that, too, yep.
And I don't think that he was going to try and show that he was gonna be a hot ass tonight, because I think he was trying to, you know, obviously...
Agreed, agreed.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
But we could probably get there, I think, I think he has that in him where he needs to get.
Agreed, and, and that's, I wanted to see, I guess, a little bit more of that, so I knew it was really there.
Yep, okay.
But reading through the, the documents and, and listening to him talk, and the "Sir," and "Yes, sir," that kind of thing, I mean, I got that, too, I was just looking for a prominent...
Yep, I know, right.
My, my authority, I'm, my presence type of thing. Other than that, I thought everything was great.
Okay. Let, okay, go ahead.
Just to be, just to be fair, I've done a lot of interviewing, too, in my time, but I don't know if I've ever been in front of, like, an accusation.
Oh, I have. Oh, hell, yeah.
I mean, it's gotta be intimidating, five people throwing questions at you, so...
For context, I've done...
I give them a pass on that.
I've done a board of senior federal DEA agents of ten, and me.
Oh, I'd have got arrested, buddy.
Yes, so, I've been through this kind of gauntlet, and I know that you're coming across trying to sound professional and knowledgeable while also being authoritative and, you know, respectful, so it's a fine line. Like I said, I liked him, I thought everything went really well, I was just looking for a little bit more, to see, like, that's my guy.
Right, okay. Everyone else good, other than Ed wants to go back?
Yeah, if you want.
Go right ahead.
To the, to the three people in the committee, do you see anything negative with the, with this particular candidate?
Where's the microphone?
I don't, I don't think so, I, I think he, at the end of the day...
Alright, alright, thank you. At, at the end of the day, he's a seasoned professional, and at the end of the day, he's putting people in a burning building, and at the end of the day, that's what you want. You want a seasoned professional that can put people in harm's way safely, and that's, that's the plus that that gentleman offers.
Good, good choice of words, thank you. Okay, as far as I'm concerned, there wasn't anything bad I, I heard him say, or anything that made me feel uncomfortable. I was trying to do what Mike did, I was trying to see if he'd be a commander the day he came in, but I think I got enough out of him where I feel good. I feel good that I think he'll work with our police department and us as well. Did I think he was nervous? No, I thought he, he seemed pretty good, I don't think he seemed nervous, I think he felt pretty comfortable for the most part, but I think he'd be a good fit, that's my opinion, so. Any other further discussion? Okay, so now, do we wanna go to a vote, an appointment for the fire chief? Someone wanna make a motion?
May I just make a comment?
I'll make the motion.
May I make a comment first?
I'm sorry?
So, if you're making a motion, it needs to be contingent upon successful contract negotiations, please.
Hold on, before we, can I clarify?
Well, no, because that would be part of the negotiation.
So, yeah, so, part of negotiations would be him moving here, timeline, all that, we have all that say. My point is, and I don't know if I should say this publicly, but whatever, so if this person doesn't have, if he can't roll into the job for a few, maybe like, whatever criteria he needs to roll, get his criteria, could redo it in a step process where he maybe makes this much and we step him up to this much?
That's something you can negotiate with him.
Okay, alright, okay, alright. Okay, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Robert Valentine, the role of fire chief, contingent upon a successful contract negotiation, and maybe a Cory check, too. And I'll, I'll make that motion.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay.
Can I add a friendly amendment to that, as well as the...
But no one it is.
A pre-employment, physical?
Yeah, sure, that sounds, that sounds reasonable.
To make sure he's in good health, right?
Okay. Alright, no other further discussion?
Do we need to put a timeline on this contract negotiation process, or not?
Well, we have to get into negotiations, alright?
Yeah, I mean, we all know that our schedules never line up, so, you can't put a timeline on a month when...
And I don't think it's gonna be like the GM in UAW, I mean, I don't think it'll stretch around for months.
It depends on who's in charge.
He seems like a reasonable man, I, I think he knows...
Well, could we at least say that we'll, we'll take, we'll complete this process within sixty days? So, just so that we have, we're not tied into this, if it starts getting to be...
Well, didn't we reappoint Joel for till the end of November?
Yes, we did.
So, that's like forty-five days.
Alright, so why don't we...
We, we, we should be able to get it done within that time.
So, why don't we just make a commitment to get it done by the end of November?
Thank you.
And as a reminder, I'm not here the month of November, so...
We know where you live.
We got your email address.
Just as a reminder for your negotiations, I will not be here.
Okay, so if you're not here for the month of November, so then we need to turn around and have you do, do your end of things, though, right? Can you do it from home?
Well, it depends, if you're, I'd need to be part of your negotiations, so I know what to write in your contract.
Right, right.
So, we either get it done and schedule a meeting before November 4th, or by November 4th.
Sure, let's do that.
Okay, I'm good with that.
So, November 4th is a Monday, I think.
Let's just get this done.
That's my last day here, so if we could schedule something that day, or by that day, we could certainly do that.
I'll make it work.
And we can get the Cory check and the physical out, I mean, that's, we can do that.
Do we, do we need the full board of selectmen to be at every negotiation, or can we...
I think that's up to you all, if you wanna all be part of that or not.
All of us have to be there at every negotiation?
Decisions are made by people that show up, Kathy, I mean, I don't know what to say.
Okay, well, I'm more, I mean, I can be there, but you guys have busy or whatever. I was just trying to think if we could start moving it along and then meet with Denise in executive session, see where we are, that's all. So, you're saying that she can't meet and do anything? Do we all have to be present every time there's a negotiation? Are we going to give Denise, usually you give her...
No, no, I think final negotiations, yes, but not...
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Initial job...
Yeah, I mean, Denise is quite capable of doing that.
Exactly, that was my ask.
So, initial job and what we're looking for. We could be, probably get that done in a night, couldn't we?
Sure.
I don't see why not.
I don't see why not.
It's a pretty generic...
Right.
Contract, I would think, and then the tweak here and there.
And then it might have to go back to him and then come back to us, type thing. Okay, so we pick a date, and then if you wanna try and get it done before Denise leaves, I'll make it work, unless I have a little notice.
Yeah, whatever it takes.
Yep.
Well, we have to see, pick a date and see if he's available for, to meet, or do...
Are we gonna do it with him in the first go-around?
Should we vote?
Can we just do this? Can we say that we're gonna make a commitment by the November whatever, and Denise will talk to him, and then get some tentative dates from him and come back to us and tell us?
Yep.
That will probably be the best way, and we'll try to fill those dates, she can get as many, I'm sure he's gonna probably do whatever he can do there.
Look, if, we have, we do have a meeting on the 28th, Monday of the 28th, if, if we could meet earlier, if, if he's not available, or if he's available at that particular time, run it by him and see if he can come in on the 28th before our meeting at 6:30, and...
Or if the board wants to meet next Monday, the 21st, just the board, and then you can create a draft and I can submit it to him for review before he meets with you.
That's what I was thinking.
So, I mean, we can pick a day, I mean, I, I don't know that you should tie your motion into a date, just because, but I would just say move forward with your motion and then we'll pick a day.
And we got two Mondays, 21 and 28.
Yeah.
I'm just asking for a commitment that we're gonna have it done by the time you leave, that's all.
I think we can make that happen.
We gotta vote on that, we haven't given a vote.
So, we have any further discussion, we're good with? All in favor? Okay, alright.
So, now...
And I actually think he was still sitting in the lobby, so I don't know if he's still out there, if you would like to speak with him before? He was out there when I got up a few minutes ago.
Bill, do you wanna go tell him?
I think Tracy already is.
You could tell.
If he's still sitting out there, Tracy's...
So, you can put together some kind of generic contract by the 21st, we can go really quick.
So, the board can meet in executive session to prepare for the negotiation.
We can have, maybe it's a front and back, but it shouldn't be too much.
You mind coming back in for...
We voted Jen.
I guess, I guess I couldn't say it.
Oh, sorry. I can't keep secrets.
So, we took a vote, we voted to have you become our next chief?
Excellent, thank you very much.
And we're trying to discuss a little bit about doing some contract negotiations.
Yes, sir.
And Denise is going out on sick leave by the 4th of November, so we're trying to get a commitment that we're gonna get our end done, if we can get you to come in and sit with us and try to do some negotiating.
Absolutely, when would you like?
Well, they were thinking the, the two meetings, Mondays before our meeting?
Well, I think that if the board can meet the 21st, you all should meet separately, and then I can certainly work with Bob, send him a draft, and then maybe either the 28th or the 4th to come back and he can meet with you all.
Okay.
So, are you available both the 28th and the 4th, depending on which day they work out?
I am available on both of those.
It would be evenings.
What about the 21st?
That's us only, we haven't...
28th, the 4th, I'm available to meet.
Okay, so, are we all good on the 21st, before?
Yeah.
Everyone's good to meet early on the 21st for the board?
No, the 21st is an off night.
Alright, what if, what's the date?
The 21st.
Yeah.
The 21st, I would say, is your meeting to discuss the negotiations, and then you can have him in...
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
Yes, and then I think you could have him...
I'm just asking, is everyone good on the 21st?
Yes, I am.
6:30, or...
Whenever.
It shouldn't take long, we just have one thing to discuss, right?
There won't be anything else on the agenda, it's an executive session.
5:30?
I could comment if you want, whatever you guys want.
I gotta feed my kids, still.
Okay, well, you guys tell me. I make my kids starve to come here.
I spore mine, I still wanna eat three times a day, I don't know what I did.
Okay, so you guys, what time you thinking?
I think that's fine, just don't, just schedule it, and I'll, I'll do what I can do.
He doesn't have to be here on the 21st.
No.
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM on the 21st.
6:00 PM.
Okay.
Okay.
6:00 PM on the 21st?
Do you wanna plan for the 28th, until I present what you guys come up with on the 21st?
I think what we need to do is present, let him mull it over, and then you've already got some tentative dates in your head that we're gonna be going to possibly meet with you.
Yes, sir.
Keep that, if you can keep it open.
Yes, sir.
You may not like what we got to say, but we'll see.
Negotiations.
Exactly, and then we'll go from there.
Absolutely.
So, you'll hear from me probably the 22nd with whatever draft they come up with or what they wanna present you, look at, you know, look through it, if you get back to me, then we can schedule to have you come in and meet with them and try and finalize it all.
Perfect.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Good seeing you again.
Yes.
Yeah. All right. Are we taking a break for a minute?
Uh, no.
Yeah.
Just announce it.
Five-minute break?
Thank you.
No, we're gonna go to warrant approval, Dave.
I'm going to the same place Mike's going. Might be a long meeting.
All right, all right, all right.
We're getting older.
Where are we going now?
Old Abbot's. Just agree.
Okay.
We got a timeout in the field.
Okay.
Plans to patch, to do some more patchwork on some of these roads in particular. The intersection at Seven Star and Center Street. There's a lot, there's a lot on Seven Star that's especially from like Bear Hill down toward Governor. Are there any plans to try and patch that up?
So even when we paved that section, I reclaimed and paved, I'm sorry, coalplain and paved that section. We did do that rutted, that really bad rutted just beyond Center Street.
Yeah.
The paver that we have in-house, I plan on going out and finishing that other side. Going to, um, there's a, there's a seam just beyond that area that will, that, that road will be, when I get through with it, a lot better for winter traffic. We also have plans on Center Street, um, just after Hillview at that corner. The, the corner, as you make that corner, the whole side of the road's gone. We're gonna upgrade that. Um, it's, they're temporary patches, but certainly makes the road a lot safer. It'll be easier for the guys plowing it. And, you know, will hopefully get us through the winter safely before we can do long-term fixes to those roads.
Right.
Next year, we'll have a full budget, so we'll be able to attack those roads. Um, a lot more ferocity than we did this year, only having half the budget.
I know people going over, you know, they're crossing over the center lane to avoid that and it's.
Yeah, I mean, the guys were out there today doing potholes, but honestly, that, that road really is in disrepair.
Right.
So we have bigger plans for that road, definitely.
Great. Uh, Center Street, the, the project at Center Street. Um, was that a town project? Was that a state project? Was that a contractor's?
So that was kind of the planning board with Bob Ericalian, um, that made that with the developer. That was part of his, to get that development, his, in his, um, part of his work that he was gonna do was lower that road. We paid for the, uh, gas company to come in and lower the main that was there. And then we paved, we paid for the paving, just the asphalt. He did all the construction, all the grading, all the sides of the roads, that was all on him. So it was in conjunction with, um, Savage Unit Construction. Sean Savage did all the, the site work there. He, he was the one that did all that. So the town only paid for the actual asphalt to be put down.
Right.
That was all we paid for.
So that, that was done primarily for the benefit of the contractor who's across the street there? Because if you look, I think the worst part of the road is just after you've finished where you're paving and going up to Washington is a mess.
Yep.
We're gonna possibly try to patch that at all?
I'm gonna patch that area too before the winter flies, but next year's, um, not to get ahead of myself, but next year, that Center Street will be very much a priority for me. Um, that particular area only has three inches of binder on it. I'm actually waiting for him, he has, uh, an engineered plan, um, to lower his road now to meet ours. That's why I haven't finished that project, because I've been waiting for that to happen. So I push that off to next year. I think will be better, better suited for us. Have, um, money in the budget to start from that point. And I'm, I'm looking to go, depending on what we have to do, whether we reclaim a coalplain, the road. I'm looking to go all the way to, um, the top of the hill right there at St. Patrick's.
Okay.
That's my plan next year. So we'll do a little patching to get through the winter, like I talked about, in that area. Just exactly just about where we stopped right at Mr. Dunn's property there. We'll go probably another fifty or sixty feet dragging, uh, a patch in there to make it smoother. Like I said, temporary patch to get through the winter.
Right, it, it's kind of a mess there.
That road, like you said, from there all the way to the church is really in disrepair. I don't know, I'll have to do a little limit, which is, that's where you full-depth basically start over, uh, with the new road. Or if we have the ability, which is much cheaper, to coalplain and repave it. So it'll come down to a little bit investigating to see where we, what, what avenue we go.
Okay, and you still have time before winter sets in to get that done?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And still on Center Street, I get a lot of complaints about this in winter. All the way down the other side of Center Street, if you keep going toward Boxford, there's an area there where, when it, it, uh, it snows and then melts and then freezes, that is extremely treacherous and it creates these big, uh, craters. I wonder if you say potholes, 'cause it's a crater, it looks like.
Oh, they're bad. They were bad just recently.
Yeah, so have you been down that area?
I have. They were out actually today, um, doing some potholes, some coal patching. Um, so, and, and they'll continue on those roads because they are bad.
Right.
And they need to be addressed.
Yeah, that, that's a particularly, um, I get a lot of emails and texts about that particular spot quite often.
That comes down to drainage in that area too. There's just, there's not a lot of drainage. The water basically runs off the side of the road, and when there's nowhere for it to go, it puddles back onto the road, so.
Okay, um, now, one thing I, I, I'd like to address with you is, there are times, uh, during the day where, um, we don't know where your whereabouts. Um, is there, um, when you're not on-site, not in the town, is there a vehicle? Is there a system where you let someone know that I'm going to be out of town? I've gotta run to here, I've gotta run to there, as opposed to we just don't know where Rennie is right now? Because that, that seems to be an issue right now.
When I typically, when I leave the office, um, I'm either on-site or I'm looking, responding to a call, a residence issue. Um, I'm usually gone from the office for an hour or so when I'm back. I did, um, address that with, I put, um, on my office a time, you know, I'll be back in. Just recently, last week I got one, so when I leave the office, I try and put, you know, an hour or so from when I leave and I get back. They have my cell, they have my email if they need to get in touch with me, if there's an emergency, they certainly can.
Right, um, is it possible, and I don't wanna put a lot of restrictions on you or, or anything else, is it possible, Denise is typically here more than twenty-four seven, um, and when things don't happen, they typically go to Denise and say, Denise, can you help me out with this? Can you, Denise, can you help me out with that? You know what this is, you know what that is? If you are not on-site, is it possible that you just touch base with Denise and say, I need to be here for the next X amount, so that, we all know if you're not, some people aren't gonna look at the door. They're just gonna walk in and say, Denise, have you seen her any, anywhere? And she can say immediately, oh, yeah, listen, he just called me two minutes ago. He had to run to Home Depot, he had to run here, he had to run there. Uh, he's gonna be back on-site or back on, in his office at two, at three, at one, at ten, whatever. Um, this way, there's, there's just, uh, it just seems a little bit of, uh, lack of communication that, you know, causing some friction maybe between some folks that are just trying to get answers and nobody knows.
Okay, that's certainly possible.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem.
I think that, that's it for me right now.
Mike, a couple of questions. What sidewalk on Gardner Street were you talking about?
It's at number seventy-seven. It's kind of the area where we paved.
Yeah.
And it's a, I have no idea why this sidewalk literally has disappeared. It's not even a little bit, it's probably like a foot drop in that one area.
Really?
Um, yeah, it's a pretty bad, like, little, and it's actually the same thing on School Street. Uh, forty-two, I think, forty-something on School Street.
So it's a dip or settling or something?
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty dramatic. It's not just your normal little skipper, you know, it's a, it's a pretty dramatic.
Okay.
Drop in the sidewalk.
Um, and then something else, I know that a couple of residents had talked to me about the, the construction that was partially done on Main Street that I asked you about.
Yeah, so.
And you got back to me quickly.
Right, and National Grid actually had, I think, two or three other projects that they had to do in that same area before they finished.
Yep.
I think they were just their last week, in matter of fact.
They finished it last week, right.
Yeah, so, and, and, uh, they have been notified, they do know about the issue.
Actually, I think they fixed it.
They did, they fixed, I, I think there were two other services they had to do, very similar to the first one, we talked about at one eighty-seven.
Yeah.
And they'll be addressed. They, they did tell me they'll address it.
Well, I mean, I walk down there all the time, so I, I think, um, for the most part, they're done. And there were gas lines that they wanted to replace because they were old or something.
Right.
Um, but I think they're mostly filled over and better than they were, so I think that that's a big help. Um, and then to piggyback on what Bill was talking about with communications, I think he was kind of spot on with some of this stuff. Um, the one that I would, um, like to see more of is, and I think this was brought up to you before, is when you're doing some roadwork, uh, and roads are gonna be closed, there's gonna be one lane or something like that, more than a day notice would be great for us, because we're the ones that are getting most of the calls. I mean, you're gonna get some of them, but people like on the street are gonna stop us, be like, how come we weren't notified that this is gonna be done? You know, last week, so we can start planning.
Yeah, I'm usually, with all my projects, a minimum of a week or two weeks out. That situation on Center Street was completely out of my control, because I wasn't really notified until a day or two before it actually was gonna take place. So unfortunately, I was at the mercy of the contractor.
I thought that someone had said it was, it was the way the contractor said, hey, we're coming in to do this.
When I found out about it, I notified Denise.
Right.
Denise put it out on the web, and I'm sure she notified you guys via email.
Right.
If I didn't, and, and, yeah, that was purely out of my control.
I know it was a storm that you did not initiate. It would just, stuff like that would be great if we had just more heads up on it, because it, it would help us when we get questioned about it.
I agree, you'll have the answer for them instead of being caught on the spot.
Yeah, but everything else, I think, is, is going well.
Good.
I'm good.
Okay, all right, so, uh, go to me and then we'll go from there, we'll try it again if anyone has any. So, snow and ice budget.
Mm-hmm.
Are you comfortable with what you got for snow and ice budget?
I feel it's bolstered from previous years, so, um, we won't be at the mercy of, you know, coming in and having to ask them more money, um, you know, halfway through the season. I haven't done a winter, so I'll have to, we'll have to see once we get through this winter where we're at.
All right.
Um, I think, you know, when you have a snow budget where we are now, that's bolstered when you get through a bad winter, you know, you can put stuff into the trucks that have taken a pound and the roads that have taken a pound. And, um, you know, we'll go through, and, and any given year, we go through about four or five thousand dollars worth, just the coal patch to get through winter. Um, so if we have a really bad winter, that can be accelerated. So it's nice to have that little bit of cushion there, absolutely.
Okay. Your regular budget, you've only been on the job for six months, um, you've done quite a bit, et cetera. Um, have you got a feel for your budget yet? Have you got a somewhat of a feel?
Um, six months in, I have, certainly have a little bit of a feel, um, for what's going on and what's needed in this town. Um, I do think there's room for improvement. I think that our services for this town should be escalated a little bit. So when we get through, once I, once we get through our full fiscal year, we'll, I'll reevaluate and see where we're at.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, you know, right now, there are many, there are varying issues that, coming into this job the way I did, some of the budget that disappeared because of the ninety-seven project and so on and so forth. We all know the trials and tribulations that we went through because of that. So once we get through that and get on the other side of it, I'm sure we'll be in much better shape.
So have you got this year's budget put together? Have you got a, an idea what you're doing or what have you?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
All right, so to go back to briefly about the ninety-seven project, so people understand, the money that was appropriated through the chapter ninety was earmarked for that road project, which you inherited that when you came in.
Correct.
So you inherited another year's payment or last payment onto that project.
Final payment, yeah.
Which then left you with a smaller budget this coming in.
Just about half.
Right, so what you've done in a small amount of time, hopefully next year you'll have a, and that's where I'm getting at, a better feel. Okay, so that being said, um, to go back on to what Bill and Mike said, um, I was an advocate, when I, I was one of the ones that really pushed and I asked, I really wanted to make sure your feet were on the floor, you were engaged with the guys, um, we're gonna be out there during snow and ice occasions, et cetera, et cetera. Granted, I get it, you needed to come in, you needed to get the office, you needed to do what you needed to do. You can't be in the truck acclimating yourself for a job. I get that. Do you see now that you've been here for six months, that you're gonna be able to take that role on, be in a truck in the wintertime for extra help, to be, um, in, not saying shoveling and raking, but to be more on hand?
Whatever needs to be done, I'm also looking to get, um, our water department.
I was gonna go there next.
Go more enrolled, um, as well as our facility guy, Steve, um, Chuck over at the cemetery.
Yeah.
So I'm looking to get everybody involved. I don't see why we're outsourcing and, and handing money to contractors when we have guys in-house that can, you know, be trained and, and run pieces of equipment that we have.
Right.
Um, I think they deserve the money and, and the, at least the ability to have the overtime before we outsource it to contractors.
Yep, so that being said, that's kind of where I was gonna go in a minute, was have you put any thought into the DPW? When you were hired, we talked about possibly making this into a DPW. I know you've only been here six months, but I think you got a pretty good feel for what's going on. You just mentioned a few of them, outsourcing jobs, et cetera, et cetera.
I've worked, I'm gonna be working with Colin, I'm gonna go in front of the, um, the water board as well and talk to them about that. You know, and I've also talked about moving, they have, uh, the water department has a couple of bins, um, of material over at the old.
Yeah, well, we just wanted you to move them.
So we're gonna move those over to our area. I already kind of got in, uh, a good, a good idea on where we're gonna put them and how we're gonna acclimate, you know, get them into our yard.
Right, okay.
So that's a good start.
Right, and that we were, we were talking about trying to clean that building up with him and what have you, so anyway, um.
Which we will do.
Okay, so you talked about the drainage project at the, uh, Washington Park.
Yep.
Do you think that will be done before winter? Cause that was a snow and ice issue and freezing issue and?
Yeah, we have, it's, uh, uh, for another conversation, during the summer months, it's tough to get things done with, with just four guys. We have a mow crew that's, you know, taking on more and more of a role. Um, sometimes just having one or two guys out there isn't enough when it comes down to Friday. Um, so you'll, you know, we could have almost everybody out doing roadsides, mowing the areas we have. Um, you know, becomes, for our four-man crew, becomes almost a full-time job, three or four days a week.
Okay.
So in the middle of the summer, it's tough to get projects going and, um, you know, really finish them the way we.
So do you think you can get that project done before the ice and snow?
Yes, now that things have calmed down with the grow season.
Okay, um, so we can be here all night, but talking about help and what have you, um, if you were to try and talk to this, do this DPW thing and integrate other different departments or whatever, maybe that could be something you looked at.
Absolutely, absolutely, I do think that.
Okay, um, have you gone through and you have a good idea on the equipment for the wintertime? Do you, do you think you're good with the equipment and repairs and?
Bill Green has been working tirelessly, um, fixing the trucks, uh, getting things ready for the winter. We do have one, uh, piece of equipment that is in dire need of a makeover. I think we'll be okay, I think that truck's about fourteen or fifteen years old, so it's, it's served its life here. Um, but we'll get through the winter with it. And Bill, like I said, Bill Green's a great attribute for this town. He's, really is a hands-on mechanic that can do just about anything. He can work magic, so, and he does, so.
Um, let me see here, uh. Okay, and these guys talked about communication, um, you know, trying to communicate with the departments, talk to them, see what you can do to, um, whatever they need if you're leaving. I, I, I mean, I don't know if too many other departments run off telling each other they're leaving, but on the same token, you have a department in which people come in the door, they may wanna talk to you or whatever.
Absolutely.
Back in ten minutes or whatever, like you said, okay? Um, and you did a great job, Amak did a great job building the shed over the pines.
That was my.
And I was just wondering, when do you think the roof will get done? Cause I'm worried about it getting weathered and what have you and?
We talked about that, it's, he's gonna, we're gonna have him do the roof on that in conjunction with the roof on the, um, Genarida House over at the.
Yeah, I'm just worried about water getting any damage in it.
Yeah, he has to, we have to get him on finishing that up.
I think that's pretty much it for me. Oh, the islands, we talked briefly a while ago about all these little different, we had that situation down in Stonebridge, and a lot of these islands that, I know it adds more mowing, but some of these islands, when these developers goes in, and they have these entrance islands, um, maybe we can talk to the planning board and have them put them together a little more simpler, so you're not having to mow grass and what have you.
We can design them a little more.
Right.
Maintenance-free.
Right.
Uh, it's better than having an HOH for these smaller developments that I know people kind of frown upon, but that's another avenue is, is make them responsible for their own.
Yeah, I'm, I'm dealing with one in Groveland right now that they've called me about, um, they're gonna develop an association to take care of all the common properties that was done through the developer. He's leaving it and making it that way, which is understandable, cause there's a lot of grass in that area. And there's a lot of upkeep of plants and what have you, so that might be something to talk to the planning board about. So I think I'm good. Anyone else have anything they wanna, go ahead, Bill?
Just one quick, um, the pines. Um, typically you look at the fields down there and you say, nobody, no reason to do anything down there in the winter. But we do have an avid, uh, dog contingency, uh, in town.
Dog park, right, yeah.
Dog park, uh, can we make sure that, I don't think you have to file the entire park in the law, but can we make sure that there's always a good clear path for those folks to get down to that edge?
Yeah, there should be, there definitely should be. It's, like you said, it's not gonna be on the forefront of any storm, but it'll definitely be clear for residents to get there.
Yeah, cause they did, they do use it twenty-four seven.
Absolutely.
Twelve months out of the year, so.
Well, dog parks become more important during the wintertime than when people can walk trails and stuff normally. So I think dog parks are, they're important.
Just maintaining a path is, would be great.
They'll definitely be addressed.
But you want something?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to ask one question, but I, I can read, uh, I'll whittle after Mike.
Well, I'm, I'm running the meeting and I just told them to wait a minute, I asked you if you wanted to go.
Uh, yeah, sure, uh, do you have, uh, do you anticipate any road repairs on some of these, uh, roads, secondary roads that have, uh, been detoured at times for, uh, Main Street? Uh, you know, the, obviously they're, they're not Class A roads, uh, you, you expect any damage to them sending some of these trucks up those roads?
That we're in tear on those side roads, obviously they feel the wrath of them a lot more, because they're not designed to have that type of traffic on them. Um, unfortunately, with the budget we have, there's no real, there's no real ability for us to, I mean, micro-resurfacing and stuff like that is super expensive. So you really have to, unfortunately, where we are, you have to wait until the road really needs to be ground and paved and to be repaired properly.
Right, don't, don't you think that it, it should be the responsibility of the state? If they're, if they're diverting all the traffic up there, that they should be responsible for some of the repairs? If they're damaged because of those, those detours, because those, street like, for instance, like Balti Avenue. Uh, they, they, they don't see, uh, heavy truck traffic up that street.
No, and that road's in bad shape.
And it's not, not in great shape anyway.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, I, I just think that the state should be, should bear some of that responsibility.
Yes, I, I don't know how we get them to do that, but I, I agree, but it's just, it becomes, comes down to our responsibility, more my responsibility, but.
Okay, anyone over here? Um, just real quick, I think I already iterated this with you, have a snowstorm, you plan on being here?
Absolutely.
And you plan on being in town?
That's a good thing.
I think that's, it's my job.
All right. Go ahead, Mike.
Mike Dempsey for Conservation. So Conservation's been working with Rennie, and I, I just wanted to ask Rennie if he can update our agreements and what's going on down there at Lower Center Street.
Yeah, so Lower Center Street, I actually think I do have that on my range.
You have it in there, I saw.
Yeah, so I do have. Yeah, I have, um, two culvert grates, um, I have them in stock. I have to borrow a piece, a, a larger piece of equipment to install these, um, culvert grates. Um, in the past, I think we have an issue down there with a resident, um, who's over needy and, you know, is constantly, and he does have a, a full gripe that those culvert, those pipes, um, that we call culverts are, are extremely undersized for that area. Um, but these grates that we have to put in place should make it a lot more easily manageable for us. Um, right now, I think we have like some fencing up there, am I saying that right?
Yeah.
To kind of keep the debris out. Uh, there's a certain amount of debris that should be let through, and these grates are designed to do that. So I work with Mike Dempsey, we've actually, I think since the beginning of the summer, we were waiting for these grates to come in. Um, we received them about a month ago, and I'm just waiting on a, uh, contractor's gonna lend us a piece of equipment so we can drop these grates in. And if that area becomes more manageable for us, certainly during storm season.
Okay, anyone else?
Good.
Well, thank you for coming in.
Glad to have you.
Unfortunately, it sounds like, I think it is anyway, every so often we'll have you in to sit and talk with us, that's.
Whenever you need me, that's what I'm here for.
So.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, so. All right, so moving on, we have the update on the cable contract renewal and negotiations.
Good evening, my name is Tracy Gelford, current chair of the Groveland Cable TV Advisory Board. I'd like to start off this evening, um, by saying I thought a lot of what the selectmen discussed with me two weeks ago. And I would start, I'd like to start out with a public apology to the board of selectmen, Denise, my board, and the citizens of Groveland, um, for my deficiencies. Um, as chairperson of the board, it's my failure for where we are today. And I publicly apologize to all the above people mentioned. Um, looking forward to where we are and where we need to be. With the board's permission, if you allow me to continue, um, my work with the board, I would like to suggest, uh, me stepping down as chairperson and replace with Rob Carbone, um, who is more experienced since he just went through a cable negotiation process in the town where he works. Uh, I would also like to suggest that, with your permission, that I, um, convene, uh, a meeting with our town council and either the board, your board as a whole and my board as a whole, or a representative of your board to discuss where we are and where Bill sees where we need to be, and whether we need to discuss with Comcast and/or, um, the state, um, a contract extension so that we can finish all the items that need to be done to satisfy the renewal process.
Okay, does someone wanna start?
I, I think as far as, I'll start, uh, I think as far as switching chairmans, that's, uh, within your court. Chooses their chairman, vice chairman, like it's almost like any other boards or any other committees, so I, I don't know where we have any say in that, if, if your board chooses that, it sounds fine to me. As far as, um, meeting, you were gonna have, the last time we, we met, two weeks ago, you were going to have a meeting. Did you have that, that meeting?
Yes, we, we had a meeting.
You had, you had the meeting?
We had a meeting, yes.
And during that meeting, did you, uh, discuss your counterproposal to Comcast based on their initial proposal to, to us?
We didn't discuss, um, that, because, um, usually, you know, in our past negotiations, and, and like I say, I, I bear full responsibility for where we are. I will not blame anyone else. In, in the past, we, our attorney was more actively involved, and I guess, again, that's my responsibility, um, for not following up with him and scheduling, I guess, scheduling more meetings. Uh, when I look back at my emails on our net last negotiation, ten years ago, our attorney was in contact with me weekly, have you done this? We discussed this, and that kept us on the timeline. And like I say, I, I am not trying to deflect any responsibility on our attorney. I guess this works a little differently than what we had done with a different attorney. And, and like I say, I accept responsibility for that. But having said that, we know where we are, we know where we wanna be. I think it would behoove us to either meet as a group to discuss where our attorney says we need to do this, this week, this, this week, this, this week. And I, again, if, in order to, um, get all the action items done, if it's determined that, hey, he says we need to talk to the state, need to talk to Comcast, we need to ask for a two-month extension, a six-month extension of what the current contract is, in order to get everything done that we need to get done. That would be, you know, cause us going back and forth, you know, as, isn't as important as the attorney giving their opinion. And I don't know if Denise wants to, you know, offer her expertise, since she's done many contracts, doing many things. I don't know if she's negotiate, helped negotiate the contract. I don't know if she's negotiated, helped negotiate the contracts in the other communities where she lived. But I want to, I don't want to guess, you know, on what needs to be done. And I don't want to have an adversarial relationship with the board. I would rarely have somebody that has been through the process, and Bill has been through the process, to say, okay, I know we met and we discussed this, it wasn't done, so this is our new timeline. This is what we need to do this week, this week, this week, and this week to get the job done, is basically what I'm saying.
Denise, is there any extra cost as far as attorney fees and that, or is it part of the typical retainer that we?
No.
We don't pay a retainer, we pay by the hour.
We pay by the hour.
By the 15 minutes, so.
But it could be paid out of, well, one of the things we did discuss, we had two different cable accounts. We had the money coming in from Comcast, the monthly, and then we used to have, and I don't know if it still exists, we used to keep the 50 cent per subscriber yearly money in a separate account. And that's what we used to designate to be used as the money for the contract negotiations.
So we have, we still have two accounts, but the money we get quarterly, which is the 50 cent subscriber, goes into one account. The other account is called the capital, the cable capital. So I don't know that I've put much in there since I've been here. Everything we spend has come out of the 50 cent fee, including the attorney's fees. So whenever equipment's purchased, it comes out of sort of that account.
So no, no, because this is cable involved, no amount of our town attorney fee, it should come, you know, in my feeling, and you can disagree, I think the money for our attorney representing us for the contract negotiations should come out of the cable account.
So I track that separately. So we get an itemized bill, and I have a spreadsheet, and when it comes to cable, I charge the cable line for that.
Okay, so that.
Yes.
He's still talking, Kathy.
Yes, sir.
Tracy, I for one am not looking to place blame on anything, because placing blame never feeds the bulldog at the end of the day. So I really don't care about placing blame, because it doesn't help the situation. So now the question is, what can we do to help facilitate your board, to help facilitate the successful completion of this negotiation? Is there something that we can do to help?
Point of origin, we haven't agreed to anything as a board yet on this issue. We just asked him to come back in in two weeks. Right, the full board hasn't really discussed what we want to do now.
But that, that would be my suggestion.
Anything that?
It's a question.
I'm not offering anything, I'm just asking.
Well, my answer to you, Bill, is just what I said. We need immediately to have a meeting with Bill Hewig, the attorney, to set a new timeline and dictate that this will be done on this week, this week, this week, in order to meet and then make the decision as to whether or not we can do it in the time involved or whether, say. I'm sure there have been towns and cities, for whatever reason, did not meet the deadline and asked for an extension. And I know that would mean that we're delayed getting the new payment that would have negotiated. But we still need a process completed, and I don't want to guess, I'm not, I'm not going to guess. I want the attorney to say this, this, and this, and that way we can work together to get it done.
Now, when do you envision this meeting happening?
As soon as we can schedule it with your blessing. And like I say, whether it's next, next, you know, ideally next week if Bill has an opening so we can discuss, you know, again, what needs to be done. I'm for sooner rather than later. And again, I apologize to the board, I apologize to Denise, my board, and the public for letting you all down. It wasn't my intent, but that doesn't get the job done. This is where we are today, we know where we want to go. We need to have direction from somebody who is experienced, and Bill Hewig is the person whose experience that can detail where we need to be. I don't want to guess anymore.
Hey Kathy, go ahead.
I'm looking at the letter from Bill Hewig.
Yep.
And he says, since many of these items mentioned don't require my participation, I left it with the committee that they should proceed with the survey and business plan and contact me when they're ready for another meeting.
Yep.
So I, I realize that you are volunteer committee, and I feel that a change in chairmanship now, that's up to your committee. It's totally up to committee and to you as to your time requirements. But I also feel that this contract ultimately is our responsibility. At this time, we can direct our attorney to negotiate for us, but we need to figure out what we want. And he laid out for us what we should be thinking about right in this plan here. He already laid it all out. He gave us samples of surveys that can go out in the town, and he gave us samples of business plans. He gave us samples of any, of everything, and he's waiting for us to do our work, to do our due diligence. And I feel like we should at least, either we should do it, somebody should do the due diligence before we go back and tell them that we want to meet again, because he gave us an incredible amount of information. I looked through this, and I just need to mention a few things. First of all, just because the cable fees are paying for the attorney doesn't mean that it's free of charge. I pay cable fees, it's coming from my pocket. The money that we put towards public access television also comes from the cable rate payer. So it all comes from somewhere. So one of the, some of the things I've been thinking about, what other towns are looking into, is can we get a discount for senior citizens? Can we get a discounted cable package for low income? I don't know if we can ever get anybody to come in and compete. It seems like we're in a position in our town where nobody wants to come in. I don't know why, but they don't. So if there's no point in pursuing that, I think we should try to pursue the few things that we can actually maybe get some traction on.
Well, Kathy, in answer to one of your questions about the elderly discount, and I'll, at one time, we did have that in our contract. When we renegotiated 10 years ago, they refused to put it in. They would not do.
I'm just going from what Bill Hewig sent in this packet. This is not my stuff, this is what he's sending to us. And I just, I took time after our last meeting to read through everything just to see, well, what is, he's provided us with so much information, so many surveys, asking people what they want. We haven't even asked the people in this town, what do they want?
Right.
Do they want a lot more public access television? Do they want something other than just meetings being recorded? We haven't even asked. These are things we're supposed to already have, do before we go back to Bill Hewig. Not, the next thing shouldn't be a meeting with Bill Hewig. It should be accomplishing the, the things that he laid out in this packet. Now, I don't know if your committee is going to get all that done in the next couple of weeks. That's what I thought you were back here to tell us.
Okay, yeah.
Are they going to do this?
We, we did.
That's all. Thank you, I'm done.
All right, hold on.
Yes, sir.
Give me a minute. I'm just going to ask you a simple and quick question. Did you stand at that podium last time?
Yes, sir, I did.
You stood there with a gentleman in town that came in.
Rob.
And I candidly asked you both, can you get me to the goalpost? And you both sat there, and you both told me, give me two weeks to get, we'll have information. From what I've seen so far, and I'll let you continue talking, I haven't got anything I want to hear yet. I did watch on TV your committee, that gentleman, I don't believe was there, I don't believe your full committee was there. You guys were talking about a survey and getting a survey out. Did that survey get out?
No, it didn't.
Okay, all right, that's all I needed to know, it didn't get out. It didn't get out.
I will, and I was asked by several members here that they wanted to see a survey before it was sent out by the cable.
So is it ready for us to see?
That I don't know.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so did we get the survey to see?
No.
No.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Who asked that?
I wanted to see the survey. I was the one that asked to see it. I'd just like to see what kind of questions they took from this packet, that's all.
I'm prepared to give that to you and prepared to discuss some of the other items that are listed here. Our review of survey questions was the second, second thing, the bullet thing.
Let me just say something.
Yes, sir.
Did you see the packet that Ms. Castenellis is showing you about Mr. Hewig's work in showing your committee what you needed to do and what?
I, I went over, you know, like I say, we did work on the questions.
So that was, that was kind of a format that you people were supposed to follow down through and carry through and get us to the gate that I'm trying to get to? And that committee did not get us there.
Well, I have some work now, based on, on what I was told with the bullet items for tonight.
Okay. All right, I think Mike wants to talk, and then we'll let you tell you the bullet items.
Kathy, what was the date on that letter?
September 24th.
So I just, and I want to clear, so that was sent to the board as a recap of the emails and the meeting that took place with Tracy and the cable TV board. So this email did not go to Tracy.
Right, but that information was?
On April 3rd and April 9th.
It was somewhat relayed to that committee during that meeting that this is what came out of it, and that's why Bill sent that information to us.
Yes, correct.
And that was April?
He attached with the email sent to Tracy on April 3rd, and I met with the cable board on April 9th. Here's what my notes, shall we discuss with the assistance of the enclosed materials?
So that's six months ago, roughly. And it seems like every time we have a meeting for an update, it's, give me two more weeks, give me another month, and we never get anywhere. Like Bill was saying, we're down to the wire here, and we're trying to get this over the line. And now it's going to come down to this board to take on another project to try and get it done. Asking for an extension just shows a weakness in negotiations, right? That's not going to get us anywhere. Part of the, part of the task that was supposed to come back, I thought, this week was to gather information about complaints from residents. Was that done?
You can't do that without the survey, and like, I was, I had sent Denise a question as to how we pay to put the survey up on Survey Monkey, and she sent me a message back that you either pay for it and get reimbursed or set up an account. And then she also said, don't put up the survey yet, the board wanted to approve the survey.
No, I get that, but residents still emailed cable@grovelandma.com their complaints. I sent emails over there. People on the, on the crier were complaining about it, and I said, hey, send it to the cable committee so they understand what your complaint is. I mean, I voiced my complaints, I fight with Comcast all the time, it's annoying. But there's threads and comments and articles about Comcast and the cable and the deficiencies and the struggles and the fighting all the time. And they, I know people have sent complaints and background information to that cable@grovelandma.com. I don't know if that's been checked. I sent an email with a whole thread of stuff from the crier that people.
Do I have access to that?
I'm looking, yes, you asked me last winter to create you an email as part of this process, and I had sent you all the, let me just tell you when it was. You can, I'll look for it while you're, oh, cable email, I'm sorry. January 10th, I had sent you the username, password, and the way to access that email address. And it was right after a meeting you came here and said you needed a cable email, on-town email, to conduct your collection of response. I don't remember how you worded it. But it's, so it's been on our website posted since that time as well.
So aside from doing a survey, that information has been made available, at least over the last couple of weeks, because I know it's applied some of that information. But I guess from what I understand, none of that was pulled down and compiled into basic complaints, whether it was price or service or response times or schedules to, for install. So none of that was compiled. So I thought during the last meeting that that was to say, we have some ideas on what we want to try and negotiate to make the services better for the town, to get more for the money that people are spending, not less. But we haven't gotten there. So now we're finding ourselves to be behind again, and it's just, we can't operate like this. We keep pushing this, this rock down the road. And when is this due, the 25th, 23rd of November?
The 28th is when our current license expires.
What, November 28th? 28th, right. So now we have 43 days or so to get this thing completely done. Now, I know you keep saying to talk about Bill, Bill Hewig can get on his schedule, he's a busy guy. Who knows if we are going to get time with him in the next 43 days? Not to mention getting our schedules to line up, which is always a fun time. So this is just becoming more and more of a problem of trying to get this contract done, not only for our services in town at the town hall and for the public streaming, but for the services of the people who live in this town and trying to get more bang for their buck. And it's incredibly frustrating to say, to keep hearing, two more weeks, give me two more weeks, when months and months have gone by and we haven't seen anything.
So I just want to comment on the whole November 28th thing. So Bill Hewig's remarks were, if we go past November 28th and we're still trying to negotiate, the recognized rule is that the old license stays in place by mutual consent, provided we are continuing to negotiate in good faith. Now, I don't know if we need to show them that we've been going through the process, that I don't know. Of course, it's always better to finish by the expiration date, but it's not the end of the world if we do not make that date. Many communities do not finish before their license expires. But I will say, his timeline was six months of the date.
But I would, I would assume that most of those communities have done something prior to, not just, oops, we don't have anything, and we can't even show anything that any work has been done, can we have an extension?
I don't know.
Okay, I'm going to ask a question, and the chair of the cable keeps talking about Bill Hewig, the attorney. And Bill Hewig, it sounds like Bill Hewig is the guy that needs to put this all together. What happens if we use cable money and have Bill Hewig help us out with this?
But Bill Hewig can't do, he's not going to do the survey, he's not going to do the business plan, he's not going to do, that's, that's the town's jobs. Bill Hewig will guide us, he'll provide us information, but he won't do the survey and the business plan. That's something the town needs to figure out what we want of our cable system.
Okay, so I'm going to ask you, you're saying, and you shouldn't have to apologize or whatever, you're a volunteer? You're a volunteer? You did your best, and that's it. But the bottom line is, do you have a chair in mind that can push this to the gate, that you can confidently tell us? You have a new chair that's going to push this to the, and no? I mean, this person that was in here, I mean, I'm sure he's a busy guy, he didn't make the meeting.
He just negotiated, you know, in this community.
After the last meeting that we had with you guys, I think I was pretty, pretty to the point that we need to get this done. And, and I know he's not a paid employee, he didn't have to go to the meeting, but he wasn't even at the meeting. I want to get someone, I want to make sure there's someone in the, in the, in the seat that's going to get this together and get, get the committee together. And is there anyone out there that we have that can put this together?
Tracy, can I ask, was he at last week's meeting? Because I think it was the meeting before, because they've met twice in the last, like, three weeks, the cable TV.
He wasn't at the last meeting, because he had someplace else.
So it was really the last two meetings that he hasn't been at? Okay, I thought he maybe was at last week's and not meeting before.
All I'm asking is, do you have, I don't know, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm not confident right now that we have someone that's going to drive this to the gate, that's all I'm saying. I'm sorry, I'm, go ahead.
I think, just to clarify, I think the problem is that the new chair may not be aware that I've never seen a business plan for cable access before. And evidently, that is required by this contract in order to justify the request for funding. So we would need to know the salaries, we would need to know what you need to spend money to buy over the next 10 years. And usually, the only way you figure that out is by looking at what you've spent over the last 10 years. And if I'm not mistaken, the current contract mandated that you were supposed to keep some kind of a record or a form on that. And it sounds like that wasn't done, it sounds like that wasn't done. And then Bill Hewig refers to, when he met with you, some kind of a replacement of the outdated system. I won't read all the fancy words, but it's between the town hall, police station, Bagnall School, and Penn Tucket High School. And somebody at that meeting, he has in his notes indicated it would cost about 200 K to replace the system. He's saying, he needs to know some backup for that and figure, if you're going to go into the negotiation for it. So I don't know if that's in your minutes or what. He talks about a passive coaxial network, I don't, this is like, I don't even know.
Right. He's referring to the INA.
Thank you. But his, his notes indicate whether the 200 K value is a real price or an estimate, he doesn't know. He can't do this business plan. It has to come from records within the cable committee. I mean, even if we pull the business plan together, we weren't at this meeting, we don't know what this 200 K is. So do you have minutes from this meeting that describes that?
Can I just, you know, for, for the sake of, you know, your bullet points tonight, give you what I have? Because, you know, one of the things, it's challenging, you know, like, Bill had said, well, what about minutes? It's like, so I've been scrambling, going through all my files to find old minutes to go to the town clerk office. Can you post these for old minutes? Can you post these for old minutes? You know, which takes me away from this. You know, there's so many different things. And like I say, I, it's my fault for not doing better time management, but I would at least like to give you what has been done for your bullet points.
Tracy, I don't hold you responsible by yourself.
No, I am.
You have a committee. I mean, Ed, you're on the committee. Who else is on this committee? I don't understand why you would be doing all of the minutes and everything else. People should share on committees.
You've got to learn to delegate.
I, I've never been on a committee and had to do everything.
Well, people should learn to step up.
Yep. Well, may I approach the board and...
Of course you can.
Well, like I said, I just...
Tracy, you don't need permission to approach the table. Please. But I do think, Tracy, please, you do so much. You shouldn't have to do everything.
Thank you.
That's too much.
Denise, can I give you this?
Oh, you know, I'm not going to be able to read this thing at all.
That's fine. Chris is going to resend me that so that I can make it larger.
Thank you. What is this? What is it? Just tell me in a nutshell. What is this?
The fir-, fir-, first page is the inventory of the current equipment. And I did, did ask Chris to redo it. I, I apologize.
No, that's all right.
I saw this tonight for the very first time.
It's, at least we have this.
And I know it's, it's barely readable. I did ask him to do it with bigger font. It should be like, Chris, the equivalent of, of the font. So, so that's that. The, the, one of the things is the questions that I had proposed for the Survey Monkey. And one of them is the live streaming update and streaming update. I, I just wanted to address that. One of the things, Chris has been in contact with our IT person a couple of times. And I know the I, um, the live streaming, it was something that somebody mentioned a while ago. And one of the things, Chris has contacted the IT person and he's got a couple of conflicting information on what we need. You know, the, the IT person hasn't given a definitive, we need this, this and this, and this is, A is going to cost X amount of dollars, B is going to cost X amount of dollars, C is going to cost X amount of dollars. And all I said to Chris, it's like, can you get back to the IT person and, and say, he was giving us options. It's like, you can do this or this, or this or this. I said, Chris, we, for us to make a decision, I don't want options. What is the minimum that we need to do in order to livestream? And, and that was the best. That, Chris said it was going to cost, what, about how much?
I think we're looking in the ballpark of 10 to 15,000. We need to up the bandwidth in this room. We need to up the bandwidth in our headend. We need to change some firewall settings, expand the number of static IPs that we need, possibly in both buildings. I had a quote done in June and I've sent five or six emails asking them for the, to clarify, you know, so that I can better understand exactly what that work will get us. But we have our stuff ready to go, ready to be configured, but we need the speed upgraded in this building. We need a cable run done here and in our headend. So that's the work that BSSC, I believe, you know, had quoted, but I wanted some more information so our board could better look at that and say, this is, you know, we have $15,000 to spend on this. And I, I haven't gotten emails back from them. I'm a little frustrated with them. I did email them on the Thursday or Friday morning. I still haven't heard back. I can try calling them again tomorrow and seeing where that, where that lies. But, you know, we have what we need ready to go. We need Comcast to up the speed. And one of the questions I had is, is that going to cost us 400 a month, 100 a month? I've gotten a couple of different answers on that.
Right. So it's not like we've been dragging our feet on that. It's just we haven't gotten, I didn't want to start the project and budget X amount of dollars and then halfway through it have them say, oh, by the way, we need this, this and this too, and that's an extra. Because when we first voted on this project, all I remember was that the, the streaming part of it was going to be $5,000 a year. And I'm like, oh, 5,000? We can budget that. But then when Chris came back and said, the IT person said, well, he thinks we might need this, but it, we could also do this. And it's like, I'm not a tech person.
It was, it's dependent on the IT infrastructure in the town buildings. I, I mean, I don't have control over that, so.
That's not helping us get to a contract though, is it right now?
Right. But that was another thing that...
It's not helping us.
That was expressed at, at the last meeting and also, you know, is one of your bullet points here. So when you're trying to accomplish multiple things at the same time, you want the contract done, you want to know about the live streaming, it's like Chris is doing the inventory. We're, we're trying to get it done. And like I said, I, I apologize if, if it's the view of this board that they, they want me to step down, I'll step down. Or if somebody wants to oversee us, you know, to make sure it's done. I mean, I, I want to help, but you know, if, if the board's feeling is that I have done more damage than help, then, then I will step away and let...
I don't think that anyone's blaming you, right? As Kathy's, wait, as Kathy has said, you've done a lot, right? You take on a lot. And sometimes you, maybe you take on too much, right? And I think this is one of those cases where maybe you take too much and this is a little bit bigger than what you thought it was going to be. When it comes to the streaming stuff, you can get any 15-year-old to set this stuff up, right? They did this, was it last year at the basketball game? They streamed from the, the, the gym over to the cafeteria, livestreamed it through YouTube or whatever they were doing. So it can be done and any 15-year-old or 14-year-old with half a brain can come over and show you how to do it.
That's not exactly accurate.
You don't need $15,000.
If you, if you want a solution that, you know, dozens or hundreds of people in your town are going to watch, you need the bandwidth support for that to happen.
I get the bandwidth, I get the piping and stuff, but it can be done. And saying that, it keeps... And saying that, we're waiting, we're waiting, we're waiting, we're waiting, doesn't help us like with the contract, right? That's a side note with the streaming and stuff. It can be done. It's not going to be that expensive. It's technology that's simple, right? It's just hooking it up and doing it. Back to the contracting stuff. I don't care about anything else. I want to get the contracting done because that affects more than just the six people in this room, right? It affects a lot of people in town. That should be the priority.
Okay.
Denise wanted to talk?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a few comments. So Boston Systems is an outside vendor. They have nothing to do with Comcast. They don't have the authority to call Comcast on our behalf. They don't have the authority to negotiate increasing our bandwidth with Comcast. They have no access to any of that.
Right. They're our official IT vendor for the town, right?
Well, they do work for us. I'm the IT director for the town as part of my job. They do work on our, on our servers when we need outside assistance. We haven't used them since last summer when we had a server replacement. So I am not aware of you emailing them. They haven't contacted me and said, hey, what's going on? So, but they don't have the ability to just come in and make changes or do things to our system. That's not their role in the town.
Okay. I thought that's who we were supposed to be using.
Well, you can certainly use them, but that's not their role to come in and do work. I'd have to authorize it. I'd have to give them access. I'd have to say, yes, you can change my network.
It wouldn't be your network.
They just don't have the right to come in and do that.
Well, I suppose this room would be, yeah.
Yes, comes through the same town network. So anything that you're asking them to come in and alter, I should be involved with.
Okay. Well, like I said, they haven't even been answering my emails, so we're not at that stage yet, unfortunately.
Right. Well, but again, if we had, the contract that was signed with the town was with me.
Yeah.
So copy me on it, send it to me. I can certainly call them and find out what's going on.
I'll forward you the whole thread.
Why don't you forward her all your, all your emails to them and then she can determine how to best proceed?
Yeah, I mean, I can just have them, you know, work on that. To Mike's point, you know, live streaming one event is a little different than live streaming every meeting that we have. So there is equipment, there is a company that specializes with this type of technology, works right with the system we have. It livestreams whatever is on our current station. So if it's a meeting being broadcast, if it's a play, if it's a pumpkin fest, whatever's on our channel would be livestreamed.
And we've ordered that. We're, we're waiting for the speed upgrades or the runs that we need, both in the head end and here.
Well, so, I mean, I have all that information. I have all the prices of Comcast. I have the, we'd have to increase IP addresses because we only have one public IP address.
Right.
But I have all that list with Comcast. So I can certainly set that up with our Comcast representative.
Can we delegate the, the streaming to Chris and Denise so that's something that I don't have to worry about anymore? And they, the two of them can make it work?
Up to them two, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, it's fine with me. I can...
So that we can check, check the live streaming off of this and then I can worry about other things.
So I just want to make the point that it's more than just live streaming one individual event.
Yeah. I just, this, this survey, I know, I don't know how, it looks like it was put together from two different surveys.
Yep. It was, it was put together. Basically, some of the surveys I looked at had, had basically over 100 questions. And one of the things I felt looking through the questions was that sometimes people might not be as apt to answer a survey if it has too many questions. So I, I basically cherry picked what I, I thought would be something that people would answer. Because I looked at it from my point of view, it's like, jeez, if I had that many questions, would I be more apt to answer it versus something versus 100 questions? Some of the surveys I looked at, they wanted to know people's age range, income bracket, and I, I just felt that was something that I don't need to know in order to have the information I need. Yep, go ahead.
What I wanted to say is that, actually, you might want to know that. What you want to think about when you're doing a survey, first of all, is what do you want to know about? That's your first thought, not, not, this is, I believe this is too many questions and too specific. We want to know about what people think of cable who live in Groveland. Basically, that's what we want to know about. Whether they use it or not, we want to know what they think of it. So we perhaps do want to know it by some kind of age bracket, and if they're willing to let us know income level, fine, knowing that it may or may not be true, because lots of people won't release that. But this type of a survey with this nice and short and like just two sides, to me has a lot of appeal because it takes care of the whole front page here with one question, rating all the levels of service.
Okay.
I'm not saying we use exactly this because we might want to know something more specific to Groveland. You might want to ask people if they, this one, they say regularly, sometimes, ever, do they watch our channels? Do you watch a sport? Just list it all here in this, you know, in this kind of format, because it's so easy to fill it out. And this looks simple. And my experience, I did surveys for electric companies years and years ago. And my experience with surveys is when you get too long, you don't get a response.
Right.
If we can tell them that, this is only going to take a couple of minutes of your time, like with the open space or whatever that we just did, we can tell them that and they're not going to have to go through this many specific questions.
Yeah, but I thought, this, this was, was good because it, it had questions and it also left areas for people to...
I think it's too specific. It's, it's too specific.
Too specific.
It has people's names in it and board names. It just, that's way too specific. But did you look at the sample, this, like this one I thought was real neat because it boxed?
Okay. I don't remember that one.
It, yeah, it's in the packet and...
Is there a town on it, Kathy?
Yeah, this is Groton, Groton, Groton. I'll say it wrong.
Okay.
Bad with names. This was in that packet from Bill. I'm just saying, something this short that kind of summarizes the service rating where they just check the channel watching and one question.
This is one of the things, and the one that I had done, I, I thought it covered two things, whether people's satisfaction and what they thought of Comcast and what service of Comcast and installation of Comcast. And it also covered what they thought of Groveland Public Access, which is us.
Right. And we want to know how often they watch it, because that's how you're going to justify asking for money. That's what we want to know. And we want to know, do they want to see maybe informational programming? We don't provide that yet. We just fill meetings. Once in a while, you'll see someone do an informational thing, but that's rare. Maybe people want more informational public access television, you know, where there's just a panel discussion about a hot topic in town, you know?
Well...
We don't know. The point is, we've never asked.
One of the things we had always, always felt that our, our first purpose for us was to support the Board of Selectmen and the Town Boards and Committees.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
And when, when this started, it, it was me doing everything, you know, including, you know, stuff at Pentucket. And then we hired Charlie to do some work, which took some of the burden off me, like you said, delegating. And I don't know if, if this is the right time and place for this, but I don't know if there's any possibility of, of having Charlie's retirement reversed.
We can't discuss personnel matters.
It's not on the agenda.
And it's a personnel matter.
Let's, we're starting to drag this thing on. I want to kind of go back to the point of trying to clarify my head on the board getting this work done. That's where I want to, I, I mean, it's, yes, you did a great job. I mean, yes, we can sit here and we all can put our opinion about a survey. I mean, I really think that, yeah, I mean, it'd be nice to put our input, but I think we're far away from, yeah, this needs to be done, I agree. But I'm not confident we have the board that's going to do the work. May I ask you a question tonight? Did, did you offer your board to come in with you tonight?
No, I didn't. And, and I have one board member in the back called Judson. And I, I just, and I don't know how, how to say this without sounding like I'm bashing the board, but I, I'm not. You know, one of the things Bill had said, geez, you know, you know, you know, if you had had trouble, you should have come to us sooner. You know, you're busy with work. I understand you're busy with life. We are too. And I understand that. But one, one of the things in even stand, sitting here in front of you now is like, I'm afraid of the board. Board has, some people tune into this to see who's going to get trashed. And, and in my case, rightfully so, you know, you have every right to be disappointed in what I have.
We're not trashing you, Tracy.
Yeah, no, I am. Yeah, no, I have, I have not, excuse me, have not done the job that I should have.
Tracy, listen, you shouldn't take this personally.
And I'm not, I'm not.
Listen, hear me out, hear me out for a minute.
Yeah.
Do not take this personally. And, and me, as the chairman of this board, I'm not here to criticize you. I'm here to try and get this to the goalpost like we talked about.
Yeah.
And hear me out. And I mean it when I say it. I, it took me a long time, and I'm just talking, I'm not talking to these guys. It took me a long time to realize I need to learn to delegate.
Yeah.
And when I learned to delegate, my company went to another step. And what happens, sometimes what needs to happen is invite your board in. Don't take all the burden on yourself. Invite your board in with you as a team. And once you get a team together and you get a team building and working with you, it will go a hell of a lot smoother. It's when you try to take the burden on yourself and try to carry it to the goalpost yourself, it doesn't work, unfortunately. You know what I mean? And that's all I'm saying. And listen, I hope, I think everyone here said it tonight. Everyone here said, they're not bashing you. And you, I can tell you truly feel bad about it. Listen, maybe you didn't know how to get it to the goalpost. That's simple as that. And there's nothing wrong with that. I can't do Denise's job. I can't do these guys' job. But yet, I do my job good, and that's it. And if I can ask one, someone to help me, if I need an answer, I go out and I ask for it. And that's all I can say.
Just so we don't belabor this, you know, I, I know you all have life. Do you want me to step out of the room so you can decide how you want to proceed?
No, it's, it's your board. It's your board.
This is open meeting, Tracy.
I don't want to.
I feel that it's too much that we're putting on you and the Cable Committee right now. I feel that it's a lot, a lot. This, the complexity, I mean, these business plans in here are, maybe we don't need one as complicated. But they're, they're kind of fancy. They're, they're complex. And the surveys are obviously done by somebody who knows how to make a print like this. And I don't see why your committee should be tasked with trying to do all of that. You know, I mean, as volunteers.
It's got to be done somehow.
Because that, that's a lot.
Tracy.
It's a lot.
Let me ask you this, as far as the survey, you, the other board members have seen that survey versus the one I gave you? Which would you like to, to proceed with? Have you seen the one that Kathy has?
Well, it's not mine. It's the one that Bill Hewitt sent us samples.
The one that Bill Hewitt, do you prefer to do that? Or do you, you know, it's like we need to do, do a survey and.
I personally haven't studied any of the surveys well enough to make an intelligent decision on any of them. But I, I want to say this. Tracy, you're not an island.
Yep.
And, and as far as delegating goes, that works great when you're working and getting paid. But when people volunteer to be on a board or a committee, there's an expectation that when they volunteer and put their name forward, that they're going to be willing to do some work. And it doesn't seem like a lot of your members are willing to help you out. So I feel bad for you because I, I think you've taken a lot of this upon your, upon yourself. And you didn't have much help. And it's, it's a sad commentary on, on the folks on your board, I think, that didn't step up and say, hey, Trace, I think you got a lot on your plate. Let me take something off it. Let me, you know, as the old saying goes, many hands make for light work, right? Well, you only got two hands and there's a lot of work here and it doesn't seem like two hands is sufficient. So I, I don't think it's, it's on you and you shouldn't feel solely responsible for any of this. Because no one person can be responsible for this. That's why we set up a board, a group of people to work on this collectively, not just one person. This is an honorous task and beyond any one person's ability, in my opinion. That's why it takes a group, you know, it takes a village, right? So you shouldn't feel solely responsible. I think you need to get that out of your mind. I don't think we blame you personally.
Someone on the board would like to talk, but you need to come to the podium and give your name on.
Good evening. Carl Judson, Sam Street. I don't know why I think that's an insult.
It's fine. It's fine to do, that, that.
That's an insult.
Well, you know, I'm sorry it is, but the proof is in the pudding.
How many lawyers does Comcast have working on this contract?
I have no idea. How, how?
That's right. You don't have any idea.
It's been, you've had two years.
Keep it civil. Thank you.
Two years.
All right, so Tracy, let me just, it's starting to get, it's starting to get heated here. Let me just.
Can someone do the survey with Tracy's input? Do we have a service that does that or not? Do, how do we do these surveys in town? Do people always have to write their own questions? Or can we give a few topics and some ideas and do we, nobody?
But it's, it's, there was a board put in place to negotiate this contract. It's not the town, it's not us hiring someone or whatever.
Okay.
I'm going to ask, the gentleman that was in here with all the knowledge, he came in out of nowhere. He came in with a lot of knowledge and he basically told this board, don't worry, I can help get this done. Where is he in the picture? Is he, and he seemed like he, I think everyone here agreed, the guy seemed like he had a lot of knowledge.
Because, you know, he, he operates a public access.
I understand, but can he help you get this done?
Yes, yes, he can.
So you going out of here tonight, I'm, I'm only trying to figure this out a little bit. We have a lot of work to do. You're overburdened. Is there any way, you're asking us basically to say, don't be chair anymore. That's not our job. That's your board. But I understand where you're at. Is there anyone on the board that would help you? Like that gentleman seemed like he was one that could negotiate. I, I don't know. I'm, I don't know. Go ahead.
I just, so you have to keep in mind though, negotiating is not negotiating.
I don't mean negotiating, sorry.
It's collecting of the data.
I mean, this board, I'm not talking about negotiating, sorry. I'm talking about working with the board to get this to the goalpost. I said it wrong, working with this board to get it to the goalpost. He seemed like a good person that knew the information, that could put it together. Change my words, put it together. I don't know. I mean, I don't know. I don't know enough about cable and, and all this stuff. I don't know it. I don't. So I'm lost. I can only help facilitate it, but I don't know enough about it.
I just, I, I want to make it happen. But if the board has lost faith in me, I will do whatever the board decides is their, their decision. What should happen.
Anyone have any ideas?
Well, I guess we all thought Rob was going to help you do some of this. And that's what we're asking now is, can you and, and Rob get together and, and maybe shorten the survey and put it into a simpler form? I don't know how you guys feel. I think this is a little bit difficult.
I don't think we have time to do a survey.
I think we're required to do a survey.
We're have to do it, my.
We may be required to do it, but I don't think we have time to do it.
Were you planning to just do an online survey?
Online was our goal, so we could tabulate the results easier.
I, I mean, I will just say in the past, I've been criticized with only online because we're not reaching the true demographics of the town.
Right.
So I don't know if it's easy to.
Well, we were going to back it up with, you know, some printed ones here in Town Hall, the library, Council on Aging, you know, to, to get to the people who might not be computer savvy.
My point is, one second. My point is, we can all sit here and take a piece of this and try to do something with it. It's not our job and I'm not, I'm just trying to say, there's a board and people volunteer for a reason. They want to be involved and what have you. That's all I'm saying.
Can I just ask one question, Mr. Chair President? You said it's our board, okay? I, I came with a survey and I was told you wanted to approve it. If everything I do has to be approved by the selectmen, you're taking away from the board doing its job. Even if you don't like my, even if she doesn't like my survey.
Agreed with you.
You're taking away my ability to do my job.
Agreed, 100%. Couldn't have been, couldn't have been better spoken.
Even if you said, geez.
I don't know that I asked to approve it.
What if you, if you looked at it online, said, geez, could you ask, add this question or this question or could this be modified?
It could be as simple as this, Tracy. It could be as simple as something simple and just say, could you give me your thoughts, period? And they could give you their thoughts if they wanted. But I mean, it's not our job.
So, so I could have.
I interrupted the point of water.
Go right ahead. But I'm running the meeting and I'm trying to.
I'm trying to tell you that I have a name.
Ms. Casten Ellis?
Yes, and when I'm referred to, I'm not she.
Who said she?
Oh, I, I apologize.
Yes, and I mean, you're putting, you're pinning, like you said, we were pinning on you. You're pinning back on me and that's not quite fair.
I don't understand. How did I pin on you?
You said, she said this, she said that about the survey. If this board wants the survey to go, they can, but you don't need to refer to me as she.
I apologize.
It's not polite. It's not professional.
I apologize.
I appreciate it.
The point is, is I, I'm going to go back to the agenda and the agenda said to review the survey.
Okay.
It doesn't say anything about voting. It was to review the survey.
Right, but my email from Denise said you can't put up the survey until it's approved by the Board of Selectmen.
I don't know anything about that. I don't.
I think I said the board wanted to review the survey before.
Okay, okay.
And I will say, I've only seen one question, because I don't have access to that. But you listed an employee that no longer works here actually in your survey. That needs to come out. You really should not be listing personnel names in a survey that goes out to the community.
Okay, I apologize.
I don't know what else is in there, but I would say, my point is that should not be in that.
Then I will, I will work with you to eliminate any names.
But I don't, as far as the survey.
If I just said cable employees.
Yes.
Would that, have you, have you had interaction with any Groveland Public Access cable employees?
Yep.
And has that interaction been good, bad, indifferent? And please explain.
Yeah, although I don't know that that really impacts the contract. And I don't know if we want to go down that road because of some personnel matters that have been going on. So I think you should rethink that question.
How long is this contract going to take? If we have to keep coming back to this board to get every little thing approved? You know what I mean? That, this is going to take forever.
Well, yeah.
It's going to be arguing like we are right now, back and forth all night, every night. And it's just not productive. That's how I see it. It's not productive. And I'm not, I agree, but you just made a comment. I mean, I didn't know we needed to vote on this. I thought we were going to review it and that was it. And, you know what I mean? That's, that's all. I don't think, my point is, when I delegate, that would have been to your board to do the work. And that's what I, I look at. You know, if we as a board have to legally look at something or do it, I would. But I don't want to do the nitty gritty, what you guys do. I want you to do it. I want your committee to feel good about it. I want them to sit down, feel like they're putting their input in and getting the job done. And that's what it takes. Now, that, that may not be happening. I don't know. And I don't want to speak on behalf of that. That's all. You know what I mean? I don't know where to go with this. I don't have the knowledge to, to do any of this. I don't. I'll be the first to admit it. I don't. I know how to look at a survey and say, you know, it looks good, doesn't look good, simplify it. I mean, that's not me. I don't even know the questions in the survey to even, you know what I mean? Okay. Go ahead. You want to talk, Ed?
Yeah, I think that the, the committee came up with a survey, presenting it to the Board of Selectmen as they wanted. And I think we should either give the go-ahead to, to post the survey. Instead of kicking the can down the road, if you, if you take, and take this out, put this in. This is going to take another week or so. This is the process that we need to go through is a, a survey. And you can, you can look at, at any survey and say, gee whiz, that question really shouldn't be in there. Now, this should be in there. You're not going to come up with, with a perfect one. Now, this is the one that they, the committee came up with, presenting it to the Board of Selectmen. And I think they should get the blessing along with, you know, a couple, just a couple of changes.
Minus with the amendments of no, no names.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, yeah, I, I wouldn't do that. I, I wouldn't add those in. I, I don't think it has anything to do with the contract.
Right.
Well, I just thought that we wanted to look at Comcast, but we also needed to look at where we are running and how people think we are receptive to their wants and needs.
Well, that's something that, that can be done again in, in the future too.
And that was one of the things on.
But in addition, like 21.
Sorry.
Like number 21. Do you find helpful to watch the meetings on YouTube? That, that really doesn't have anything to do with the Comcast contract.
Well, we can stay here all night and pick it, whatever.
Present it, get it, get it up and get.
Mike, have you seen the, the survey that Ms. Casten Ellis, Suck Woman Casten Ellis has? Have you seen that survey?
I don't have that one.
So why don't I just ask if it's okay with her that she gives it to you? You may want to run it by your committee with the survey that you've done, maybe, and, and leave it at that?
I don't want to give them our work. It's obviously a sort of, just take off the questions they want.
Could I just photocopy that survey?
Well, you can have it. I mean, it's a packet from Bill.
I can forward you the whole, I can re-forward you the email that Bill sent us.
You can just take it with you. It's not even, doesn't even have all of your questions, so you may want to, I mean, I just thought it was simple, that's all.
And that's my point that I was trying to make is, maybe he looks at that one, looks at the one they got. They may like that one better and then they can move on. That's all. That's all I was saying.
He, he sent it to you back in April. I'll just re-forward it to you. It has the surveys included.
So, look at that.
Anyway, I don't know what the board wants to do. I mean, I, I think that we need to, I'm not your committee.
The only, only thing I, I will say, I would, would ask, definitely ask for assistance on, for me, that Denise or Kathy, since their financial planning would be, you know, I have no idea how to set up a budget. And, and, you know, when Kathy first said that, geez, you know, it would be nice to see it set up similar to like a water department or electric department that, you know, you would have salaries, you would have expenses. So that, again, and that it would be included in the town report so that the town knows, again, the money coming in and then how it was spent. I mean, that, that, you know, and I'm not familiar with the budgeting process on a department. I have never run a department. When this was originally set up.
Help them.
It, it was set up with, with the finance director, you know, yeah, sorry.
I mean, I don't know their expenses. I know their salaries, but I won't know what they're planning for expenses. That's going to be up to them to decide what they want to budget for.
Right, so what we need is your expenses going forward. I mean, they, obviously what you spent, you spent, we can get your salaries right off payroll. That's easy. But going forward, that's, I think, what Bill Hewitt was mentioning from your meeting, that 200,000 or whatever.
I think they need the survey and the business plan to know what equipment they're going to need and what updates they're going to want to do. And I think it all sort of goes into the same thing.
The business plan has the salaries.
I think the survey that plays into the business plan and the business plan then takes into consideration the equipment and the needs and.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
And I'm not trying to give people jobs, but I'm only going to ask. Suck Woman Casten Ellis, would you be willing to maybe go to one of their meetings and sit with them? Seeing we have so much financial background and help, see if you can give them a little direction or are you too busy? I'm not trying to put, I'm not trying to be wise.
It would depend on what it is. No, I'm always glad to drop in.
I think that, it sounds to me like they need a little bit of help connecting the dots.
Well, these business plans are complex. I mean, they have a lot of levels of detail. Yeah, you've got to provide the information. So if you, it's going to cost to do things, you know, the things you want to do for the next 10 years.
And also, Tracy.
You know, then we, that would be the business plan. That's what the business plan is. It's what you want to do for the next 10 years and how much it's going to cost.
Rob came in, the gentleman, and he said that he does this all the time. He runs the network, blah, 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 all that. I was under the impression, me was under the impression, he knew what you needed to do and he had a good handle on it. When you asked to give another two weeks, that's why I did what I did. Because I listened to that gentleman and he made it sound like, don't worry about it. I got it under control. Don't worry about it. It takes time. Don't worry about it. And I felt truly from listening to that man that he knew what needed to be done. Have you had that conversation with him? To see, he had, it seemed like he had a lot of knowledge.
He wasn't at the, at the last meeting. Something came up and he was.
So maybe you could pick up the phone and give him a call too, because he seemed to me like he had a lot of knowledge.
He, he was not at the last meeting. Something came up.
Okay, well.
So.
I don't know. Go ahead, Deb.
Look, I also have a strong financial background. Denise, do you think that you could reach out to Bill Hewitt and get a business plan from some other town?
He sent us a one.
He sent us one. It's in the packet.
It's in the packet from three meetings ago when we started talking about the business plan.
If she's not available and you have a meeting.
Yeah, Bill, yeah.
Get hold of me. I'll help you through it.
Okay.
Whatever it takes to get this across the goal. I don't care.
Like I say, I'll, I'll take help from anyone. I just, you know, that part, I have no clue on, on how to set up a budget.
I, I don't think this board should be ratifying every step and move they take. We should only ratif, be ratifying the final contract that they negotiate.
Right.
But to have that, their board come back to us with everything, it just impedes their progress. Where they don't, they don't move. They get stuck in the mud because they're waiting for.
Okay, I wasn't aware that you allowed surveys to go out without somebody reviewing them. I thought it's public information and stuff.
Can I, I work with Denise then?
No, I thought, don't you usually see surveys before they go out?
Well, it's usually me doing the survey based on what's decided at this board meeting.
Oh, oh, I didn't know that.
We've basically empowered their board to take on this task, to, to, to do these things and complete these tasks. And that, hopefully we've empowered you with, with that authority, right?
And that's, like I say, that's what had me confused, that, you know, the board wanted to approve. And like I said, if they work with Denise, I'm more than happy to work with anyone the board deems that can assist us and do what needs to be done.
Right, but if you have to wait for approval every two weeks, it's just going to impede your progress. You're never going to move forward.
Tracy, I can tell you this. If for any reason at all, you need help, you're stuck at a point and you need, call me. And I don't, I can't get you the answer, but I'll try to facilitate it to the point where I can help you. But I, I don't know this. I'm being honest. Like you're being honest, I don't know budgets. I don't know this. I don't. Budgets, talk to my wife. But you know what I mean? Putting the job together, putting the hammer and nails, putting the mud, whatever, I can do that. But I will help you facilitate whatever I can help you facilitate. Okay?
Okay, appreciate it.
Go ahead, Ed.
I, I know Tracy's time is pressed during the day he's working. But if he, if he wants, Kyle, myself can, can go over the surveys with Denise and, and get that.
I end up, okay, that's fine.
Do you want to do that?
Yeah, yeah, if I can delegate you to discuss with Denise.
We'll, I'll get together after the meeting with Denise and get a time that's available. And we can, hopefully we can get this done within.
Will she know what?
Well, I mean, again, I haven't even, my only contribution to the survey is there shouldn't be employee names in there. If the board wants me to do something else with the survey, you need to tell me what you want to do.
Then take the name, then take the names out and I'll post the survey.
That's my, I, like I said, I only looked at it over Kathy's shoulder. I don't know what else is in there. That would be my only feedback is there can't be names.
If it's a requirement to get it done, if it's too long or if it's too lengthy or whatever, they'll answer when they want to stop answering.
Okay.
That's a requirement to get it done. Let's just get it done.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I'd take that out.
I think what, I think what Ed's saying, Denise, maybe take a glance at it and see if there's anything that you see legally don't belong in there. That's it. I don't think you should be redoing it.
If that's what you'd like me to do, I can do that.
Just, just talk through it real quick. Make sure that whatever needs to come up needs to come up.
I'll get together with her tomorrow and...
Yeah, I'm in the opposite.
Okay, so Tracy, you've been here long enough.
Would say.
I'm in the opposite.
You want to say something real quick?
You gotta go before you say you've been...
Yeah, it's okay. But like they say, we can't mention names, so it, it, it does, it does good to have a second set of eyes, um, just...
Could you go to the podium for a minute? I know you're on the board. I know Ed's on the board. Could I ask you, as a chair of this board, you've sitting here, you both listened to this whole conversation tonight, could you please help me, now that we know, we need to, to talk to the other board members somehow and try to facilitate with them? I appreciate it. Awesome.
You know, we're doing, we're trying to pick up the tide of Comcast coming in. You know, they're kind of, they're going to tell us what they want.
Right, right.
And we're in a hole right now.
Right.
How do we compete with them?
Right.
That's our trouble. And Rob has got all the experience, and Rob is going to, you've gone through it already.
Yeah. I think he's the missing link tonight, but if we can get him in, and get him in on the air and get him going, that would be a great help.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Bill, and, and part of the problem is, part of the problem has been, it, we're getting down to the crunch time, but forget that the, this is something that should have been going before, uh, but at, the board couldn't have any meetings because there were only two members. And we finally were able to, uh, able to get enough for, to hold a meeting. And so Tracy was doing a lot of this stuff on, on his own, because we couldn't have a meeting because we didn't have enough members. We only had two, and you can't conduct business with two, so Tracy was taking a lot of that upon himself. And then when, finally, when we, when we upped the membership, uh, things started to get rolling a little bit.
Okay.
But, but...
Well, you know where we're at. If we can try to even get this thing moving. Appreciate it, Tracy.
Okay, I'll have more contact with you and I'll, you know, have more contact with Denise to give more updates on what we're working on, so that you're not in the dark.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming in.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so now, moving on, we have the town manager continue discussion. Continue work on job description. Someone want to start?
I'll start. Um, it's getting late, so I expect this to be really short.
Yep.
I can't, I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Mike.
It's getting late, so I expect this to be really short. I believe at the last meeting, we were tasked to send me documents on what we wanted in the job description. That didn't happen. I got some from Kathy. File anything, because I didn't have anything to compile. But I think that the way we're taking this on is a bit more complex than we need it to be. I think all we're doing is putting together job description, and I know you were trying to protect Denise and her involvement in this in case she maybe wanted to apply for this position, but it's just a job description. Let's put it together and put it out there. We don't have to go through all these hoops and pushing it out every two weeks for a month or something. Just put a job description together and go with it. That's it.
Okay. Anyone else?
I, I agree. I mean, I, I felt bad sending, um, all of that stuff and, and, like, I mean, it's just, I'm just lifting it off of other job descriptions. I mean, there's basic, I think at the end of it, I finally said, after looking through like four descriptions, I said I liked three categories for the job description. I think seemed to make sense. One was, um, do you remember what it said?
No, I have no idea.
So, like, they all have different, they keep, keep different category names. Like, one had operations or something, and the other one had like administrative duties, then financial duties, and then maybe it was like general duties, something like that. And that made some sense. Like, that's, that's a simple enough framework that anybody reading it would understand that this person, we're getting rid of the financial director position, so obviously this individual would have to take on financial responsibilities, and then the administrative, because it's day-to-day administration, and then general. I thought that kind of a format made sense, you know, then tailored to our town.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hey, do you have anything on this?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Okay, Deb?
No, I read through, um, all of them. They all have some valid points. It's too bad that they're all in PDFs. Makes it a little more difficult. They don't tell you very well. But I think to Mike's point, I think we're beating this horse to death, when it should be very straightforward and pretty simple.
Okay, so what I did is I was given this paperwork, um, a few weeks ago. I went through it, and I kind of highlighted what I thought would be for a description for a town manager, and then I put green for an assistant, um, to a town manager type thing. But again, like, we're running out of time, but we can do a job description. I, I agree, that could be done. But I think a job description is premature to where we need to get. That being said, um, we need to get to a town vote. We need to do some legwork before that. Maybe I'm out of line by saying that, but I just think that we have a lot of, um, we did get a, we did get a survey or whatever you want to call it, but up to you guys. If you want to just go with the job description, it's fine with me. But I mean, this has got to go to town meeting floor to be voted, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, but I, I think we need the job description to say, this is what we want to do. This is what we envision.
Got it.
This is the role we want to fill.
Yep.
And I think we need that as the foundation.
To go to town meeting.
To go to town meeting and say, you know, this is what we want. This is the car and the model that we're looking for.
Perfect, all right, great. So, that's fine with me. Go ahead, Ed.
And in addition, before you, before you bring it to the townspeople, you need a cost. In addition to, if you go with a town manager, in addition to a town manager, uh, you're going to need probably a, another full-time employee, uh, maybe even a, uh, part-time employee. So you might be, you might be looking at, uh, either a new town manager, uh, and another town, another full-time employee and a part-time town employee. So before you, before the people vote on it, they want to know, what is this going to cost me? When, when we went to, uh, brought the, the school to the, to the ballot, to the town meeting, well, you didn't go in, we didn't go in with, well, we need a new school and, um, but without a cost. So the cost is first. What is this going to cost the townspeople? What is it going to look like on their, on their taxes? And, uh, and I know that, uh, well, we'll talk about that at, at a later time, but, you know, we need a cost.
Okay, well, quick question. Go ahead. Who sets the salary?
We do.
Thank you.
Comes out of the general budget. There's no cost increase.
Well, the, the, I mean, I would be willing to, it's not going to increase their taxes, Ed, because we're just dividing up the pie. Do you know what I mean? You're not, we're not doing, asking for an override for this. We're replacing, um, a financial director position that, that has kind of grown and taken on administrative duties into that. We're going to add some additional. But you're correct. In addition to that, we would have to bring in, into the financial department, I would suspect another, um, lower-level position, just to pick up some of the slack. But, you know, the, I think that should be identified, just like it was identified when we got rid of the administrative assistant position and added more to the financial director's job. I mean, each time we've done this, like, we've, when we created the financial director department, we, we went to the town meeting and showed how we were going to divide the cost up, but we didn't have to ask for an override because it's not a significant enough increase to merit that.
But I, I think to Ed's point, he's saying the town manager is going to be more money than the financial director possibly. That's going to cost the town pays more money, and then there could be an assistant to the town manager type thing.
Right, right.
So that's going to cost another person. That's, that is one.
It is going to cost money, but I mean, the question is, are we doing it just to spend more money? Well, absolutely not.
No, no.
We're doing it because we're looking at the progression of our town and, you know, building a town for the next generation means looking at the functioning of town government every once in a while and saying, gee, could this be run a little better? Could we be more efficient? Maybe there'll be, um, more savings along the way as this gets going, because we'll have the right oversight to take advantage of, um, situations where departments can share. All of that now is, is just left to individual departments to try and work it out. This is, this is a, a step towards the future of, of where you usually go as a town gets a little larger and has more complex affairs.
Okay, go ahead, Ed.
And I, I still advocate for getting it on the town ballot.
Yep, I think that's fine.
I think that that's fair. And, and, you know, and I hear about, uh, costs, that, well, it, it, it won't increase the taxes, but, uh, it, that's, uh, it does. I know taxes can only increase up to two and a half percent. I, I've read that the proposition two and a half, cover to cover, many times, you're, you're limited to two and a half percent. But nowhere in there does it say that it has to go up two and a half percent. And what you're also figuring in is an increase in the value of the property. If a person's property goes up in value, they're paying more in taxes. And all you have to do is take your, take your tax bill from last year, your tax bill from this year, and how much did it go up? I, I think we're, we're way premature in, let's wait and see what the actual impact is going to be on the schools. We're, we're going to be paying for a new school. What's this going to cost us actually on our tax rate? If you go around town, and Bill, you're, you're around town all day long. Look at the houses in the town of Groveland that are for sale, and there, there is a lot of it. Just in, just in the main roads, I, I counted, uh, twenty-two houses just on some of the main roads, and I didn't get into any of the projects. So people are selling their houses, and they're moving out of Groveland. And why? Uh, it, I get, I get people saying to me, if my taxes go up over nine thousand dollars, I'm going to have to put my house up for sale. It, it's expensive to live in Groveland. We've got a lot of, we've got a lot of senior citizens, and they're, they're living on a fixed income. It's great when some members here on the board, excluding you, uh, can, if, they can work overtime. They can get another jo, they can get, but some of these senior citizens that are retired, some of them are only on social security, and they're having a hard time making ends meet. And I feel for, I feel for these people. And it, it looks like to me that I'm the only person on the board that's looking out for some of these senior citizens, some of these taxpayers in Groveland. Keep the costs down. Let's see what, again, let's see what it costs for the schools, and then we can move forward, because nobody has been able to get a true figure. It, it's going to cost me, on my taxes, X amount of dollars. See what that's going to cost. We were talking, I, I forget now what the cost was, but up near, near eight hundred to a thousand dollars.
End of the day, Ed, I agree with what you're saying. At the end of the day, the taxpayers will have the chance to vote for it or down it. That's the, that's, that's the bottom line.
And that's why I want to see it on the ballot.
Agreed, agreed.
Because you go to a town meeting, we all know that special interest groups can stack the meeting, and it'll, it'll pass. Although we did have, the last town meeting, we, we did have some articles that, uh, it didn't pass. But I think it's important to get more of an input from the townspeople. This is, this is something that's important for the town, if, if we're going to move the town forward. The more people that weigh in on it at the ballot, the more, that it, it, it's better for the town. So you're not going to have, uh, you, you shouldn't be having a hundred to a hundred and twenty people, a hundred and thirty people deciding, uh, the future of the town. Let everybody get a chance to weigh in on it. You get, again, I hate to keep repeating myself, but again, at a town meeting, you get a lot of the, the older people. They're intimidated going to a town meeting. They're, some of them, they can't physically get down there. That's why at, at a town election, you have what they call an absentee ballot. There's no such thing at a town meeting. And, uh, I, I, I want to push for that, a, a, a ballot box vote.
Okay, so if we agree with you, Ed, to put it on the ballot in addition to town meeting, will you help us move forward on this so we don't keep going over the same questions? I think it's fine. We put the financial director and other positions on ballots when we, when we change the town. I mean, just, it's fine. What, if you present it properly and you explain to people that you're creating a position in the town without asking for additional funds, we're not raising your taxes, but we are divvying up money differently in order to facilitate this new position. The additional money, if you're interested in where it might come from, Ed, could come from new revenue growth. It doesn't have to come from the taxpayer.
I don't think you can explain that all on the ballot. That's the problem.
No, but people understand when it's not an override, but they don't, they will confuse and muddy the waters if we continue to go back and forth and equate this position to the school override. It's two very different things here.
Right.
And it needs to be explained simply.
It is a hundred percent two different things. I agree with you. It is.
Yes, it is.
And I don't think, but my point is that, the point is, is we have cost, and that's what we have to keep an eye on, is what cost, you know, for the...
Well, it's how you divide up the pie. Yes, cost.
Right.
Is it worth it? I'm not saying you spend the money not just to spend it, but we've been going back and back and back about this cost of taxes going up, and we've, again, said, that's a school override. That's a different thing. So if we can concede as a board that we're going to send it to the ballot, can we at least present this to the voters by the spring town meeting? Present them honestly with transparency so that they can understand what their decision is. I don't want to confuse them or scare them. I want them to know what their choices are.
I, I think you're, Ed, at least a year away, because I, I would, I want to see the first couple of tax bills, what, how much our taxes are going to increase for the schools. I know we voted for an override. But let's see what that is going to cost, and then present it.
Why?
Why? Because I think the people, I think the people would like to see...
This has nothing to do with that. We just told you.
Yes, it does. It certainly does, because if, if, if...
Absolutely not.
I know we voted for a tax override, and, but if the, if the tax, if a person's taxes are going to go up seven, eight hundred dollars because of the school, I think they might have second thoughts about, uh, changing and having a town manager with additional costs. And you can't tell me, if you're going to, you're, you're going to be talking a hundred, probably a hundred and forty plus, a hundred and thirty to forty, maybe more, plus another full-time employee, maybe a half-town time employee. So I, I, I want to see it, uh, I want to see the tax bills come out for the school, uh, see what that's going to impact the people, and maybe they'll have a second thought. It sounds to me like, like you're jamming it down their throat. You want to get this done before the impact on the schools. And I think that's wrong.
Absolutely not. You asked to have it on the ballot, and I said yes, and now you're still saying jamming. I just, I'm sorry.
Mike, go ahead. Yeah, most of what he said is speculation with, um, salaries and extra half-person and full persons. It's all speculation and, um, really unfounded. Um, as far as the school price, there's an actual formula that's been spent around, uh, for years on what it's going to cost. And actually, it's gone down because of the rate of pay that we're borrowing against, so if you want your exact bill, do the math. It's that simple.
Okay, so does anyone want to discuss this further, or where are we going with it? I mean, we're stuck on... I am, said in the very first night, I am a big advocate for the ballot, so I will not back off on that. I think it's ballot. I don't believe it should go into the town.
Right.
I mean, we could have done that with the fire chief, right? We could have put that to the ballot, because that increased with the pay. Right?
Listen, we pass a seventeen million dollar budget with a hundred people at Bagnell School every year.
But that's different. That's different. That, that hundred people is okay to vote on. The other hundred people to vote on something else is a catastrophe.
That's a big number to vote on, seventeen million, but I, I, I have to agree with Ms. Castanellas.
Would you put, would you put the ba, would you put the budget into a ballot question in the ba, on voting day? Would you put that in there? Is that something you do?
I'm sorry, what? The whole budget?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, no.
We don't do that, no.
So what you're saying is they came to the meeting, town meeting, a hundred people it takes to get that done, that job done. This is a bigger, I know that's a big number you guys are talking about, but it, that's what the government takes. I mean, it doesn't take to put that budget in the, in, on election day to vote. You know what I mean? It's just the process.
We're saying the hundred people to vote on the overall budget is important.
Right.
And the same hundred people to vote on any other increase is important. Right? It doesn't, it's the same people. One is not more valuable than the other. The same amount of people are voting for the same thing. So to say one is valuable and appropriate and one isn't is ridiculous.
My point, and my, my point is only because of change in government. That's my point. That's why I wanted to go.
But that's what the information comes forward, and the discussion, and the education, so the town can decide. I'm not saying that we're going to decide. The town's ultimately going to decide, but they need to know the impact, both good and bad. Let them decide. Stop going back and forth, or stop going one step forward, two step back. This is ridiculous. We keep going over the same thing every single meeting.
So, then if you want to turn around and take a vote, which is not on the agenda, you can't.
No, so now we've got to kick it down two more weeks to see if we can take a vote on it.
What do you vote? It's under possible vote. What are you voting on?
What do you want to vote on?
About the, um, putting in a ballot or not.
Oh, you can, you can make, it's under possible vote, under the agenda item.
Someone wants to make a motion to put it in the ballot or not. Then we won't have to kick that can down the road anymore. Ridiculous.
I'll make a motion to put it on the ballot. We passed the road commissioner that way. We've passed the five-member board. I trust, my only concern is that we have to present a clear, clean picture of what's going on. Don't...
And can I just clarify that the road commissioner, though, was a non-binding ballot question?
Oh, it's non-binding?
It was non-binding, because there's no statutory requirement for it to be a...
Well, would this be non-binding, too?
We'd have to talk to, I don't know. It doesn't require a ballot question, so I'd have to talk to council and see if you could put a binding ballot question on the special legislation.
Oh.
Special legislation requires town meeting. You did non-binding to assist your results with the governor's office, but I don't know.
So we need to ask.
I'd have to ask if you can...
You have to ask town council if we can put this on a ballot question.
To be binding.
Yeah.
Binding.
I didn't know that.
Okay.
And, um, also ask, uh, also ask town council, is, uh, probably have to check with the secretary of state's office, could it be a, a petition? Could the citizens do a petition to get this on the ballot if he deems that it doesn't have to?
Yeah, but they would want to know if it's binding or not, Ed, before you put it on... Yeah, but they would wanna know if it's binding or not, and before you go that road.
Well, right, but, and then, it would be, it would be binding if you do a petition and find out how many signatures you're gonna need.
The thing is, the thing is that I don't understand, it took other towns a year or better to do their, maybe because they read into it more, like Mike said, we keep kicking the can down the road, I don't know. But me, I would like to give the town people all their information ahead of time, and I don't know if it's gonna be done by the spring, because, like Mike said, we're kicking the can down the road every week, so I don't know.
I don't think, I don't think you're ready, and I think, I don't think you're ready to do it within a few months. I agree with you. These other places, if you look at it, they were a, some, plus a year.
And the only reason I make that statement is because there's a lot to it. Yeah, the job title's part of it. Also, if people are bringing up, on the board, bringing up a point that we need another employee or whatever, we really need to have all that conversation in order to make sure we make an informed decision. So, let's just say we go ahead and we do the job description and what have you, yeah, great, okay. So now, let's just say we turn around, we hired this town manager or whatever, and then we need this other person. That's not being feared of the taxpayers, that we may have to go down the road and get another person. So, I think that all that conversation should take place.
And you are absolutely gonna need another person, 'cause you statutorily need a treasurer collector.
Right.
Eliminating the position that I'm in, you need a treasurer collector.
Right. So, we need to create the treasurer collector, we know that.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So, there's more money.
Just a quick question. Is this really a change of government?
Sure.
Yes.
It is.
Of course.
Right. If you had a town charter, you could do it within the charter. It's still a change of government. But you don't have a charter, so everything here has to be done through special legislation.
Yeah.
Okay. So, what do we wanna do, Tim?
I think we can get it done, but not if everybody is not on board to get it done. That's my, my concern is if this whole board isn't in uniform, like, this is what we're doing, these are, these are the costs, this is not a tax override, if we're not gonna be upfront and transparent, and we're gonna just keep going back and forth on this, it's not gonna get done. That's my concern.
The point is, is I don't wanna go to the taxpayers, and I understand what you're saying, I just don't wanna go to the taxpayers. They need to know upfront, it's gonna be another person for tax collector. The salary is going to increase to this. I want them to know upfront. As long as I'm sitting here, I want them to know right upfront. We're gonna need a higher tax lawyer. We're gonna need to pay this position X amount of dollars. That's what I want.
Well, and, Bill, we can do that in one meeting.
All right.
That's nothing. The money is, adding it up is not the problem. I just wanna make sure we're all on board, that's all.
And you may need an administrative assistant to the board of selectmen that most places have. I think the only one in the neighborhood is, West Newbury does not.
They have just hired one.
Excuse me, they what?
They just hired one.
They just hired, administrative assistant?
They've had one all along.
And, you know, we talk about, you know, that, well, West Newbury did this, Georgetown has, look at our neighbor, Merrimack. They don't have a town manager, and they got a larger population than the town of Groveland.
Go ahead, Bill.
I'm not sure what the relevance is there anyways, but to Ms. Castenellus's point, I think if we have, if we have to wait for unanimous verdict, this will never go anywhere. Just like if Congress had to wait for all the Democrats and all the Republicans to raise their hand and say yes, never would a piece of legislation ever move forward in the chamber or on Beacon Hill. So, I think unanimous is unrealistic. Majority rules.
Right. So, we have a five-member board, all we need to do, get three of them in affirmative, and we're done.
There you go.
And that's all it takes, so.
Okay.
All right. So, I think we've kicked this can tonight down the road. Does anyone wanna turn around and sum this up in a nutshell and say they, what they wanna do?
Yeah, let's get the numbers together for next meeting and make a decision next meeting.
Numbers on the salaries?
Whatever Kathy was saying, the numbers are easy to put together.
Yeah, just the town manager and the treasurer collector job, that's all.
Please what?
I just, I don't really wanna offer input, but I don't see how you can come up with a number when you don't know what they're gonna do.
We're gonna ask you for a salary survey.
Feed a job, just tell you what this position is gonna do, what type of authority it's gonna have, who it's gonna oversee, what it's gonna do day to day, then you figure out your salary associated with the tasks you're giving it.
Right.
You can't go backwards. You can't say, I'm gonna pay someone $125,000, and then work into what tasks you're gonna do. You need to do it the other way around. At some point, you need to come up with a list of what this position is going to do, whether you call it a job description or whether you just make a list. But you need to know what this position will do here.
Okay.
And then you can start talking about a salary, and then you can talk about the organizational chart, but you need some direction to do that.
You have to start out with duties, responsibilities.
Right, you don't need a full-blown job description, but you need to know what you want this position to do here.
But I thought selectman Watson was saying, he doesn't wanna do anything till we know the money. That's what I was reading.
Well, I think he wants it to go to the public until you know the money.
I wonder what it's public?
I think that's in, a step in the process.
So, you're on board to get a job description done?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Wanna write it?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I'll write it.
Okay, you write your draft.
All right, you probably won't like it, but I'll write it.
Go ahead, you write your draft. We'll see. I have a challenge accepted.
Well, we better, we better focus on a cable contract right now.
Well, okay, so, we're still looking for job description. We're back to a job description, so, next week.
So, can I, can we, let's take away the phrase "job description." Just start with what type of authority, or who do you want? You need basics. Do you want it to be able to appoint certain positions? Do you want it to be able to appoint board and committee members?
So, what I've done is I've taken the sheet that you gave us, I've gone through it, me, nobody else, me, I have put in what I thought a town manager would be responsible for, and I changed it. I also said, what, an assistant, or whatever you wanna call that person, with that job would be, and that's what I did. I went down through this list, looking at both sides of it and what have you, that's what I was gonna do. So, I don't know if that's what you guys wanna do next week? I don't know. I'm not good. Fortunately, I don't know how to do a computer to get it over the mic.
I, I'll take.
So, I did it illiterately.
Let me see your little markings. What have you got? I could type it up. I think I have the sheet on my computer still. So, what is green? Okay, assistant is green and manager is blue. And what does yellow mean? What's the yellow thing in the middle?
That means I just put down what Groveland, just showing what Groveland was.
Okay, so, everything blue.
I don't want you to do it, I did.
I have this on my computer.
No, 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 but I want you to do your own work, that's all.
No, 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 I have this on my computer.
All right, awesome, good.
This spreadsheet.
Yep.
Right?
Yep, you should have it, yep.
I do.
Okay. That's all I did. That's all I did to come up with my, my.
Do you have it too?
I'm not a computer person.
All we have to do is take these out.
I gotta do it with pens and paper, sorry. I didn't mean not to give it to Mike, but I did have that conversation.
All right, I really didn't want it anyways.
So, who's, I don't know. Okay.
So, you could use that as a starting point. You could take those blue items, and then you could discuss those.
Blue and green, you got it.
However you want to do it.
Can I get that back?
Well, how am I gonna put it in the right categories if I don't have your blue and green card?
Oh, you wanted to use mine?
She's gonna take yours and consolidate it, like she did with her.
Oh, sorry, okay, go ahead.
Just make a list.
I didn't want you guys to go off of what I said.
'Cause I have the computer file for this.
Perfect, okay.
So, Kathy's already done it.
I know, okay.
Kathy's compiled what she likes. She'll take what you like, and then you guys can use those as a starting point.
All right, perfect.
Even if you get through one, you just need to have some.
And I'll send it to Mike.
Okay, that chip has sailed, I don't want it anymore.
Okay, so.
So, am I putting this on your agenda? Am I gonna continue to keep this item on?
Yes.
And you'll have these discussions? Did you wanna wait and schedule a separate meeting, or just an agenda item for this?
No separate meetings, 'cause we got too many meetings.
So, I'll just keep it on, just continue discussion, and you can discuss it as you need to.
So, can I just throw a big wrench into it? So, Kathy's gonna go take this, and she's gonna go do her work with it. Ed, you've seen it, you have it. If you wanna go do your hand stretch, and then we'll come back. Let's just, next meeting, let's just, next meeting, discuss this. Period.
Just that?
That's it.
Oh, you mean, but during that portion of the meeting?
Yeah, exactly. No, no, yeah, exactly, that portion.
That's it.
Then we may go to another meeting, we'll talk money, we'll talk another, about a possible administrative person, whatever, okay? Bits and pieces.
Okay.
Okay? So, next week, we're gonna do this.
Baby steps.
So, if you need me for, if you need me to resend the spreadsheet, I can resend it, if Bill and Mike, you wanna look at and make your notes on it. That's a good starting point, you can take that and say, yes, we like this, no, we don't, and have that just, even if you go item by item and vote, at least you're getting something done. However you wanna do it.
I'm moving in that direction.
I mean, that would be a good starting point. So, if I, if you need me to resend just that, I can resend just that.
Sure.
I can do that.
Okay, so, can we move on now?
Yes.
Okay, so, moving on, hopefully this is gonna get separate votes of the board. We have finance director's time.
I don't actually.
Thank you.
I don't have much.
Okay.
No, no, well, I really don't have, just a couple of quick things. So, I wanted to thank our facilities coordinator, Steve McPherson, and Steve from the highway department, who replaced the library doors. They took care of that.
And I got a thank you letter from the trustee of the library.
Oh, great.
She sent me a thank you letter stating that, oh, I'll, okay.
Would it be possible to give it to me, so I could give it to him? I mean, he did the work. Could I thank him for it?
Yeah, I gotta dig it back up, but it's in my trash folder, I'll get it.
Is that the one that came in?
Saturday?
Yeah. I'll send it to you, Denise, I got it.
So, I just wanted to thank them for that. And then, just to, so, next, well, not next meeting, now that we've added a meeting on